Okay.
We'll call the meeting to order, please. Can I have a roll call?
Andrew Bradford.
Here.
Andrea Bradford.
Angela Wilcox.
Here.
Mike Shackleton.
Here.
Gavin Newman.
Here.
Barry Alshuler.
Here.
Leah Callister-Lazari.
Here.
If you'd like to stand and join us in the plat.
My pleasure.
Diligence to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome to our meeting this evening. I'm going to start with my report. I have two things. We finally have been able to settle on the date of September 12th for our board retreat. But now what we need to determine is what time of day we're going to meet. Typically, in the past, we've met from about 8 until 1:00, 1:30. Is that what we want to do again? Is that okay with everyone? Sounds good.
The earlier the better.
Yeah, it's good.
It's good.
Okay. Brian and I, Brian will work with the IASB rep and then we'll set all that up. The other thing is that we have conflicts with our meeting that we have already scheduled for July 23rd. And it seems that we will have the largest complement of the board on the following Tuesday, July 30th. So, is that okay with everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
What is it?
July 30th.
It's not too long between now and then. I guess by early.
There were no other dates available. If you remember, we started on the 16th and moved to the 23rd and...
That's right.
Okay. So, we're just going to ask that in the newsletter from this meeting, that that's included, that our next meeting has been changed, and then that we try to communicate that frequently since it's already been, you know, scheduled on another date. Now, public comment. We have some people signed up. Before we start a public comment, I just wanted to make a little statement and thank those of you who are representing BEST 220 and supporting them who came out tonight. Following our last meeting, a representative from the administration set up a meeting with BEST 220 for this coming Thursday. And so, we want you to know that that's on the calendar. Anyone who would like to join us is welcome to be there. There will be representatives from both the administration and the board at that meeting. It's at 8 o'clock in this building. And we, you know, we want you to know that we're listening and we do care and that we think that we're moving in the right direction, but we want to work together to accomplish this and that we all really care about the kids of our district. So, on that note, we have some people signed up for public comment. So, I have to read a little bit. We've now come to the portion of our meeting when we set aside time for public comment. We value your thoughts and opinions and ask that you state your name, elementary attendance area, or relationship to the district before beginning your comments. We also ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. And we've got quite a few people signed up tonight, so we're really going to try to enforce the three minutes. Janine has a timer, so you'll hear it ding. So, when you hear that ding, we're going to ask that you wrap things up. While this is not a conversation, any comments or statements being made that require further attention, we will ask Dr. Harris or the administration to follow up and report back to the board. So, we have seven people signed up. The first is BEST 220. So, ours is actually longer than three minutes, so we can sort it out? Or I can just read it through? It's up to you guys. Can you just reset it for three? I guess nine minutes for three people. No, I don't know exactly how long it'll take, but everyone is willing to pick up and read if we have to, or I can just read it straight through, whatever we want. Just set the three minutes and we'll see what happens. Yeah, just read it as it... She's going to introduce who we are, though, so people know, and then we'll start. I have a terrible cough, so if I start coughing and can't talk, I'm leaving and someone else is going to reach. It happens often. Technical difficulty.
Just unplugged, so that means...
I know. I am plugged on purpose.
Okay, okay.
Do you want to start?
Are you an AV?
Speaking... We're waiting for the power.
She's like, went off. She didn't want to. She didn't want to. That's very nice.
My name's Gay Lennahan. I have three sons, two have graduated from Barrington High School, and my son Sam will be a senior next year.
Do you have to speak up? I don't think people are...
Do you have a microphone for class?
Yeah, pick it up for the camera.
Okay.
For the...
Okay, I'll speak up. Okay. My name is Gay Lennahan. I have three sons, two graduated from this district, and I have one son, Sam Lennahan, who will be a senior next year. And I'm with BEST 220. I'm representing them with everything we're saying tonight, and we appreciate you listening. I wanted to start by just explaining a transition program since so many people are here. The goal is to prepare students with varying abilities for life after high school. Barrington's transition program begins when students leave high school until the age of 22. BEST 220 is an advisory board made up of parents. Our vision is that all Barrington 220 learners are respected, challenged with, and challenged with the highest expectations, shown dignity, and have a voice regarding their education. Okay. I'll go ahead and start. Yes, start. Okay. My name is Kathy Cottell. I've lived in Inverness for 27 years. I have three children, two of them that have graduated from Barrington High School and have had their whole education here. And my middle child is in the transition program currently and will be aging out in May. Is that going to work or no? That's okay. So, on behalf of BEST 220, it is critical to share an accurate history of the transition program with the school board and the community. We are strongly opposed to the Grove Avenue location. It will not facilitate a program that is equitable in educational opportunities and commensurate with the culture of our community. The story begins with the Stewart's House. The Stewart's House was used for over 10 years. There were multiple complaints over the years. In February 2017, at an initial presentation of Blueprint 220 Future Ready Schools, parents gave pictures of the deplorable conditions. The Stewart House was not part of the facility data collection process done by an outside firm for Blueprint 220 presentation. If it had been, it would have become an immediate top priority of the district. The house was not ADA compliant, along with many other unacceptable conditions. The following day, the house was abruptly shut down. Students reported to the high school with no preparation. Parents of students in the transition program were told the house was shut down because of the upcoming severe weather season, not because of the existing conditions. Thirty, or in February 2018, the district purchased the PepsiCo Building across from the high school for $1.1 million, adding an additional 8,000 square feet. Three months after the shutdown in May 2018, with a $50,000 remodel budget, the district held an open house. A wheelchair ramp was installed, the front, the paint was fresh, the filthy carpet was taken out, the bathrooms were cleaned, and we had no access to the basement where the mold was found. Parents requested to see the basement but were denied. The basement was latched and locked. The front step was not repaired. In August 2018, school started and students went to the classroom at BHS rather than the Stewart's House. In 2018, BEST 220 requested another meeting. At this point, parents lost trust. It had been one and a half years since the initial shutdown. The district's stalling, lack of accurate communication, and multiple promises not followed through did not help. BEST 220 requested administration postpone the use of the Stewart's House until there was an assurance of the emotional and physical safety of students by providing the following documents: an air quality report, resolution of transportation issues, capacity and occupancy, fire, weather, and safety procedures. After no response, the email was forwarded to the superintendent, who responded the students would go to the Stewart's House on Monday and call if we had questions. A representative of BEST 220 called the superintendent. The answer remained the same. BEST 220 then contacted the board president, who thought students had already been attending programming at the Stewart's House. Parents notified the district that their students were not allowed to attend the Stewart's House. Those parents were told students will either go to the Stewart's House or their student should be picked up. Our students were denied their education. Later that day, we received an email from the district with three options: send our students to the Stewart's House where programming would be offered; send them to BHS where the district would provide a substitute teacher; or keep our child home. We received a call saying that since parents do not want their students at the Stewart's House, they would go back to the classroom at BHS. They have been there ever since. In November 2018, families had the opportunity to share their concerns with five administrators. We were told that the district would hire a real estate firm to help locate a facility. 3,000 square feet was the target. In February 2019, we were told a facility was found and a lease would be presented to the board for approval. The space was 1,600 square feet. BEST 220 met with two board members to share concerns about the Grove Avenue location. BEST 220 shared a statement at the board meeting on April 30th. At the next board meeting, the district presented the details. The lease is for $3,300 a month for a 1,600-square-foot building or space. It's a five-year lease. There will be a kitchen, two bathrooms, one larger to accommodate the changing needs of a student, a washer and dryer, a workout space, a nurse's office, social space, instructional space, technology, micro-business. We're unsure of what the remodel budget was. The board members present voted yes. At the next board meeting, BEST 220 came prepared to share a statement of optimism, despite our doubts that all that could really happen in the space. When we arrived at the new building, we were shocked. The sprawling building was beautifully remodeled and finished. It was purchased for $1.1 million. The projected remodel budget was $1.7. There are 90 parking spaces for employees. The amount of space was almost double James Street. All of this left us wondering, why wasn't this space considered? If the transition program was incorporated into this building, it could accommodate all the things that we had discussed with administration the past two years. It was right there the entire time, yet it was not considered. We trust that administration had done their due diligence. It's hard to believe that the district has spent so much time and money searching for a space and lease. This location offers ideal visibility and access to the high school and the community. Instead, it was decided that a leased 1,600-square-foot space in an office condo building was good enough. The district did not use an outside architectural firm for the final plans. BEST 220 contacted a firm, and after speaking with them, we question whether an outside firm would put their stamp of approval on the space, knowing the facts. We question whether the administration researched the surrounding districts. District 214 has one of their transition programs in the same building as the administration building. Stevenson High School has a house 4,400 in square feet, and word is they're looking for an additional location. Districts 211 and 214 have several programs in various locations. Lake Zurich's transition program is located in the high school and designed specifically for the transition program. Hinsdale has a brand-new building. Naperville 203 has a large space in a centrally-located retail building, includes a coffee shop and two micro businesses: flower arrangements and paper manufacturing, custom cards. It seems the district has the lowest expectations for this program. It, that is a stark contrast to the culture of the Barrington community and all the other programs in the district. Spaces have been created for the health science lab, business incubator, and culinary programs, just to name a few. It was important to improve the district administration building. It is equally important for these young adults to be in an environment that optimizes academics, independent living skills, and job skills to prepare them for productive, successful future. We heard the district is going to model a used-technology recycling program for adults with disabilities and that they found a space in a garage at Barrington High School. If this is true, it is again another example of a poor facility and the inequity these students face in Barrington 220. A garage, isolated from the community and away from other students, it is unacceptable. A transition program should have many job opportunities. A transition program in the district administration building would be more visible to the community and help secure a wider variety of jobs and increase awareness. It has been stated, quote, "The Barrington Transition Program students will rarely be in attendance in whole. They will be in cohorts based on their job opportunities. Therefore, some will attend in the morning and some in the afternoon. This means that there will most likely be approximately 10 students in the building at one time," unquote. In the past, the limited job opportunities have been in the afternoon. What job sites have been secured to accommodate 10 students in the morning and 10 in the afternoon? Will students be reporting directly to and going home from the job sites? Do they eat lunch together? Where is the chart showing the flow of students during the day? Teachers, aides, and the nurse must also be considered in the numbers. This information should be immediately available now, since IEPs are complete and school starts August 20th. The district must properly plan for a long-term district-owned solution. A news article stated that on the lot for James Street could be used to build a permanent facility. What serious consideration was ever given to building a transition facility on James Street? We appreciate the work of the realtors hired by the district. The spaces available are very limited, which is all the more reason to use the available space at the new administration building or to build our own facility. The district has the property. The students can be evicted from a leased space at any time, leaving them nowhere to go. This statement is no reflection on how we feel about the teachers. The teachers must be frustrated with the limitations and inadequate facility. The number of students is increasing from 14 to 22 next year, and an additional teacher has not been hired. We would like Grove Avenue lease ended and the Barrington Transition Program in the administration building. The work on Grove Avenue started yesterday. Time should not be an issue. The administration building is ADA compliant and has an abundance of bathrooms. We would like the new administration building to become a permanent facility for the Barrington Transition Program. If that is not possible, we want the district to build a permanent facility on James Street. We urge the school district to investigate the above comments, questions, and suggestions. Specifically, request that administration produce a flowchart of all 24 students' schedules. Students with special needs are respected and valued by our neighbors and community. You can tell by the people that are here. As parents, this would have been much easier to cave in and accept the district's decision. However, it is our ethical responsibility to bring this issue out in the open and let Barrington know what is going on. The district goes above and beyond for the best and the brightest. All students need to be equally valued. Thank you.
Okay, you're next on the list, but I'm assuming...
Okay, I do have one little thing to say.
Okay.
Oh, this is real quick. I just wanted to recap. Just, and I know that was long, but the bottom line is better decisions need to be made. These students deserve more from all of us. It should not come to a meeting like this. We don't, we didn't want this to happen. Why wasn't the transition program part of the Blueprint 220 data collection? Why is the bare minimum okay when it comes to these students? How can it be that this building was purchased and renovated at the same time that we were in need of just a little bit of space in a location exactly like this? I've got to believe there's at least 1,600 square feet in here, maybe more, that could be used. For those that work in this building, it will brighten your day seeing the pride and confidence of these students. Most of these students will understand that though they have graduated, they are not being dismissed. They'll feel empowered being near the high school, yet a step above. They'll understand that they are surrounded by a community that believes in their potential and supports them as they become young adults. Thank you very much.
Please, could I have a sign up as Lance Rogers? We have a coach, Mark, who was supposed to pick up his son. It's a privilege.
Mark Bren, Mark Reinhardt?
Yeah.
I'm just going to remind you of the three minutes, please.
I'll hold the...
Thanks.
Good evening. My name's Mark Reinhardt. I have three children that have gone through the Barrington School District. I'm sorry, well, I've got two that have gone through successfully in U of I engineering programs, thanks to their time at Barrington. I have a rising sixth grader who is part of the Chinese immersion program for seven years now. And so, I know the good work you folks do. I know you know how to stretch a buck. I know when the Chinese immersion program lost its federal funding, you stepped up and made a tough decision to keep the program going. So, this isn't easy work. I get it. I know you pushed through an infrastructure bill. Couldn't have been the most popular thing on the voting agenda this past voting cycle, but you did it anyhow because you knew it was right. And I think no less so here. I've had the privilege to coach these kids for six years, and Kathy made the point that your day would be brightened to be around them. My life is tremendously enhanced. And that's not for any lack of love for my kids, but this is a special kind of relationship. And I think it's one that we, as a cohort of parents and educators, we have responsibilities to these kids to figure this thing out. Not going to be easy. If somebody were to say, were there a spot for public donations for this building, I for one would step up. I'm sure that we'll figure a way to do that. My check is on the table. I'll do that. I think it's that important. Thank you.
My name is Lance Rogers. I'm the father of three children that have matriculated through the Barrington school system. Over the past 29 years, my relationship with school district 220 has been manifested in four qualitatively different iterations. First, even before any of my three children were in the district, I served as the primary coordinator covering the northwest suburbs for Harvard College admissions, where my tasks involved interviewing numerous Barrington High School seniors. From the outset, I marveled at the world-class preparation the students had been afforded by their Barrington upbringing. Second, as my oldest child Kyle matriculated through the 1990s, I witnessed every quality opportunity available to accommodate his athletic prowess and the camaraderie nurtured by the quality events afforded by our well-capitalized sports venues. Third, my daughter Eloise proved to be the scholar in the family, adorned with academic challenges and quality AP programs and teachers, qualifying Eloise for a significant waiver of academic requirements at the University of Michigan. Finally, then came Matt, born in 1998 with Down Syndrome. Based upon my three previous interactions with district 220, I relished the opportunities the school district would offer, anticipating that in coordinating with our family, we would be conferred with the same level of world-class initiatives in making Matt the best person he could possibly be. In contrast, we encountered early on the imposition of the regressive Stalinist regime of the Student Services Department with its ethos of "yet, yet, yet." The resistance to inclusion persisted throughout Matt's high school years up to the transition program, to the point where we needed to initiate litigation just to enable Matt to be allowed to continue with two high school classes. In contrast to the administration's stonewall, the students and faculty embraced and welcomed Matt as one of their own, even coronating him as homecoming king 2016. Now again, the district is confronting the transition program with its latest initiative to suppress and hinder its special needs students, leasing the leper colony off of Grove Avenue where they will be ensconced, effectively cutting them off from both their student peers and the Barrington community. Though stifled from the pertinent information under your cloak of confidentiality, we parents nonetheless timely presented to the board the cogent arguments demonstrating the woeful inadequacy of this property then under consideration. The district was accordingly on notice of our objections, but ignored them and proceeded anyway. We now find ourselves in a meeting surrounded by this beautiful new administration building, and I can't help but perceive the creativity, competence, and standards of excellence which the district affords to all but our own. We appreciate your consideration of the matters raised by this meeting, and in doing so, ask you to remain mindful that our kids are also Barringtonians, born and bred, every bit as much as the students who win athletic state championships or go on to Ivy League schools. Although they may not furnish the stuff that lends itself to celebratory road signs or elite academic statistics, that should not be cherished, they should be cherished with all the opportunities and striving for excellence that the board affords to all of those who have been placed under its protection, with the sacred duty to create an environment that enables every student to be the best as he or she can possibly be. Thank you.
Susan Rogers for Michael Teric, Terzic, I'm sorry. Going to remind you about the three minutes.
I'm Susan Rogers. I am a parent in the district, and I am reading for Michael Terzic, who is also a parent of a student in the transition program, and I'm reading his statement verbatim. My name is Michael Terzic. Sorry I can't be there in person tonight, but I still felt compelled to have a voice on this matter. Our daughter Emily is a special needs student at BHS and will be entering her super-senior fifth year at the high school. Over the past several years, I've had the opportunity to engage with many of the parents who have children in the program. I have been impressed with the passion, devotion, and commitment that the parent community displays. Being a parent of a child with special needs can be an emotionally draining, exhausting responsibility. You work constantly at ensuring your child's needs are addressed both educationally and socially. You seek small moments of peace and progress in a world that oftentimes has ignored and abandoned these students. But the good news is that I see progress and hope on the horizon. As a corporate executive, I have seen firsthand the social change that has been occurring for people with disabilities, as well as ethnic minorities and gender discrimination. As human beings, it is our calling to lead by example and create a more inclusive and diverse society. The power of this principle is clear, and many organizations are adopting change at a much faster pace, which has been heartwarming to witness. Unfortunately, this is where my disappointment in district 220 surfaces. I have listened to parents recount multiple years of frustration, whether that be associated with an IEP event, the living conditions of the Stewart's House, or countless unproductive sessions with the school and/or district administration. I, too, have had moments with my daughter's IEP, as well as other related matters. Barrington High School prides itself on being a nationally-recognized premier learning institution, which was on full display at the recent graduation ceremonies. But the lack of leadership, accountability, and initiative displayed toward the special needs program and community is known to only a few, often swept under the rug and hidden from full view. If more citizens were exposed to what has transpired over the years, my sense is much of the luster would fall off the shiny Barrington reputation. While there has been progress in society on these matters, BHS 220 feels like it is stuck in a third-world approach to these issues. Given the community and district resources that are available, this should not be the case. You have a community of parents willing to proactively collaborate and provide a variety of assistance and support in the form of financial and other expertise. Many other families also stand ready to help in matters that can help shift the program from its dirty little secret status to one that is befitting the broader school reputation. It starts with building leadership and accountability at both the district and board level. We need someone to step up and lead, be accountable for the outcomes, and not merely activity, and be willing to make hard changes. Who will that champion be? The time is now for all of us to stop talking and start doing. The world is passing us by. Thank you for listening.
Hi. I don't have anything official written. I'm kind of here out of being requested by several of these parents. I am Deedee Johnson. I have three kids that are now all graduates of district 220. Several, some of them academically and athletically achieving, achieving. My... My, I'm a lifelong, pretty much resident. I've run a business that's now been around for 50 years. I kind of come to the table with what I feel, I do have an education background, with a plea to all of you. Until you have a child who has a special need, I'm not sure any of us really can know what that feels like. I'm astonished that, I run a program, it's free for kids with special needs, and these parents have helped me make that a highlight, not only, I think, for their children, but it is a program that I have to turn kids away, who are typically developing, who want to be a part of it. We're actually considering taking them with us on a trip to Europe next year. I can't do it without these parents, and I don't think that you can do it without them either. And I think somewhere along the line, that disconnect happened. Obviously, no one wants that to happen. I manage a building that my father owns, a corporate, you know, commercial property here in Barrington. Frankly, who's ever getting $3,000 for 600 square feet, I would, 1,600 square feet, getting $3,000 is too much money. I could rent for half of that. I realize maybe my facility is not acceptable, I'm just saying, I think there's more out there. I think putting these people, these students, in situations where we can do workplace development, and it can be a reason that people want to move to Barrington, I'm sorry, as a business owner and as a homeowner, I want my house to have high value and I want my business to keep going, we need more people. What a better thing to have than the state-of-the-art transition program in all of Illinois, and people will move in here. We do it with the Early Learning Center, we do it with the giant Jumbotron, we, I'm proud to say my team won the check for incubator. I'd be happy to run an incubator program. I'd be happy to reach out, this community has nothing but intelligent people living in it, and we do have people, and I'm just going to say it, who have some money to spend. I'm more, I'm more influence, I think, than affluence, but I think by the people here, you have all the help you need. And I just think if you could reach out, obviously, no one developed this or whatever, thinking this wasn't going to be a good idea, but it's not. I think that's what these people here are telling you, it's not a good idea. So if there's something that we can do, if there's something I can do, if there's something these parents can do, they are happy to do it. But there's nothing more rewarding in my job today than my Shining Stars program and where we've taken these kids and what they have brought to the typically developing students. And on a personal note, my oldest and my youngest have both chosen fields, working for kids with special needs in the masters, and my daughter-in-law is getting her degree at Harvard in this field for helping this community. So, I guess I only had a post-it note, but I implore you to really think about what you're doing and look around the room, because we got a phenomenal community here, we just need to make it work. So, thank you.
The next person to sign up is Doreen Howard.
Good evening, I'm Doreen Howard. I have two kids who have gone through the elementary, through the high school, they both graduated. I don't, I'm not a parent of a special needs child, however, my daughter was involved with the period three choir, and I was, it was very unfortunate to hear that it was taken away. She works with special needs kids at our church, and it was such a natural for her to do it. And, you know, friends would say, why would you do this? Well, you know, they're kids, they eat the same food as me, they go to the same movies. It was really an enriching program, and she got friends to do it. And I guess what maybe you don't see is that it affects the whole community when you take away programs. It teaches them how to be leaders, it teaches them about the inclusion diversity that we heard about. You know, you, I worked in a corporation, you learn about, about diversity, inclusion out of books and lectures and presentations, but when you roll up your sleeves, you really get it. So, that was first thing. And then the transition program. I have family and friends that teach high school at New Truier 211, and they were shocked to hear about what's going on here. So, I have to say, I'm kind of embarrassed, you know, to be part of Barrington. And, you know, I, I have friends who have special needs kids, so it gets kind of personal to me. So, just wanted you to know that my comments are really from a observation perspective. I can't experience what it's like to, you know, be a parent 24/7. So, I hope you consider that it affects, you know, these families, the neighbors, you know, and give our students an opportunity to really roll up their sleeves and, you know, get, be friends with these kids. And when you isolate them, you take them away. So, that's it. Thanks.
Doreen was the last one who had signed up for public comment. Is there anyone else who'd like to add a comment?
Yeah, just one quick question.
You, could you come and identify yourself?
Bye.
I'm reinforcing the three-minute rule.
I'm, one, one's David.
Okay, thank you.
My name's David Schwaeger. I've got three children that are gone either through the Barrington system. I have one right now that's going through the transition program. The one thing that I just really want to say about this is that all these parents that are here are really here just for their kids. They're really trying to look out, look out for their kids in the long term. And most of us, we won't even see the results of this. Our, our kids won't benefit from what we're asking, because we know it takes time to do these things. But we're just tired of letting it be pushed down the road. Sooner or later, it's just got to stop, and actually, they need to happen. Again, my son won't really reap the rewards of this if things happen. A lot of these parents won't reap the rewards of this if these things happen, but we just can't let it keep happening. You know, the, not, we can't, can't let nothing keep happening. We need to do something. We need to make a stop, and this is where it's at. It's, it's really on you guys. When you hear all these people talk about, you know, how this affects them, and, and one of the big things is, unless you're a parent of a special needs child, you really don't know. We, we bring our children to you, and you guys have them for a portion of the time. We have them all the time, because even when they're with you, they're still with us. And we can, we're concerned. And if their best care isn't in, in, in the forefront of things, we're still concerned. We're still nervous, we're still worrying, we're still wondering what they're really getting out of it. So just keep that in mind, that all this, you know, if you, if you think that we're sitting here just complaining about things or anything like that, we're really not going to see the benefit of it. We're just trying to help out the community. That's it.
One more hand, and then you're going to be last.
My name is George Baldassano, and I speak before you all as a friend of a lot of the students in the transition program. I had the privilege of coaching them on the Special Olympics basketball team for four years, all throughout high school. And I can tell you that this group taught me so much about passion, empathy, any, any positive adjective that you want to throw in there, they taught me so much about it. And when this was brought to my attention by Mr. and Mrs. Cottrell and Mrs. Aki, about how they're being slighted on their learning environment, it was embarrassing, it's laughable. And as a graduate of Barrington High School, I graduated in 2018, I really appreciate everything that this board has done to improve the greater student body's learning environment. I know you guys wasted no time putting in those colorful chairs with wheels on them to improve our learning environment. It's great and all, but why slight this often overlooked population of the high school by putting 22 groups, 22 students in a 1,600-square-foot house that could comfortably house a family of three? But on a day-to-day basis of having 22 students in there would, quite frankly, be uncomfortable. So, I really just want you guys to take a step back and consider, if you were in this group of 22 students having to learn in this environment, day in and day out, you probably feel cramped and uncomfortable as well, and I'm sure you would, I'm sure it would hinder your learning experience. I don't know, maybe throw some colorful chairs with wheels in there and it'll all be better. But I really just want you to think about how you can use, use the money that we have and the influence to make a better program for these students who really deserve it and are highly contributing members to this society. So, thank you.
With that, we're going to prepare a public comment closed. And I just want to say again, we're going to have the meeting on Thursday, and people are welcome to join us. It will be in this building, so.
AM or PM?
8:00 AM, in this building. This was something I think that was agreed upon by the administration and the best 220 people. Yeah, so, thank you all for coming out. Dr. Harris, your report, please.
Yes. Well, I wanted to first and foremost welcome Janine back to the seat this evening as the recording secretary tonight. Janine Stark had, could not be here this evening, so it's always great to have Janine back with us, so thank you for being here. Exactly. My report tonight is brief. I'll wait a second here, I think. What's that?
Just move, say, go ahead.
I will start by saying that we have summer school in full session across the district at all levels, and it's almost like school never ended. If you go around any of our school sites, you will notice that. Tonight, we are also on the personnel report looking for two recommendations for the board's consideration to hire two new administrators to help us here in the school district. First, Dr. Margot Schmidt, who is here this evening, thank you for being here, is recommended to be our new coordinator of grants, professional development, and social emotional learning. A little bit about her background, she has a wide range of experience and background. Her doctorate in education, she has a superintendent's endorsement, obviously administrative certificates and master's and bachelor's degrees in the classroom. So, she has a range of experiences coming from other school districts, and we're excited to include her in our administrative team moving forward pending the board's approval. I'll let her comment after we consider the personnel report, so hold on just a second on that. Chris Wodnowski is also recommendation this evening for our new student services department chair at Barrington High School. Chris could not be here this evening, he is actually on vacation.
I think we have to leave the door open.
We got to leave.
We can close one. Yeah, we can close one.
One.
Leave, close one, yeah.
Karen, you can, yeah, you can just leave it like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris is currently a staff member at Barrington High School, and he'll be moving into a leadership role, so we're excited, recommend him for this special services department chair at Barrington High School. And again, a little bit about his background, he has an extensive background as well, also was a school psychologist, working with special needs students in his past, as well as, you know, master's degree in, in psychology and, and his license, or administrative license as well. So, we're excited to recommend both these candidates on the personnel report. And unless there's any questions, that's all I have this evening. Questions from board members?
Okay, we'll keep moving along. Any, we have some FOIA report on the informational reports, any questions?
One of them was, I've never seen before. What, what reports do you, or what documents do you keep, or something like that? It was interesting.
Janine's our FOIA officer, and we do get a lot of requests, and that one was unique. Kind of puzzled us.
Quite sure what they were. Yeah, I didn't know either.
My hunch is, and we talked about this, that it's probably a community member from another community that believes he's not getting the appropriate information on his FOI, so he's flying all the other districts to see how they complete FOIs. That's what I think it is. He FOIA'd many districts.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, that's just my hunch. Lives in Hinsdale, is that correct? Or, I don't remember that.
I think it was Hinsdale.
Yeah, I think it was, so, I, we don't know, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hey, any committee reports?
So, Penny, I am so sorry, I didn't report on safety and security at the last meeting. That was my bad, I know.
Well, you can have the floor now.
I said, well, I'll, I'll be really brief. It was, we met on May 30th, and, did I miss something? Yeah, I did, I missed.
You were, you were at your conference.
Yeah, no, well, I was at, I think, anyway, I think I dropped the ball on this one.
You weren't here.
Okay. That was, okay. Anyway, so we had the critical incident drill at the high school, it went great, you know, we had, you know, some really interactive pieces in this, we had, you know, Good Shepherd Hospital involved, first responders involved. Our next-year critical incident training drill will be at the elementary level on November 8th. So, we'll start letting parents know about that. Let's see, what else do we have? Some, oh, we talked about some classroom emergency procedures, getting everything kind of routine across all schools. And we should have all of the trauma kits that we talked about, I think, a few meetings ago, complete by the end of next year, and in all classrooms. And, well, we'll probably talk about tonight about the, the radio, the, the new communication devices are, you know, we're in the process of getting those. So, I think those were the highlights of the meeting.
Thank you. Any other reports?
I think we've got a couple policies.
Just a couple.
Just a couple, just a couple.
Finance, don't want to stay, let us steal Dave's thunder here in a second, but we'll get to finance here momentarily.
Got lots of action items.
Lots of things.
Okay, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda? So moved.
Second.
Okay, included on tonight's consent agenda is a treasures report, revenues and expenditure report, as well as some exception reports, activity reports, bill reports, and a revised personnel report. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Kenny Casmer.
Yes.
Gavin Newman.
Yes.
Leah Colster Lazzari.
Yes.
Mike Shackleton.
Yes.
Angela Wilcox.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Action items, we have second reading and approval of board policies. Is there a motion to approve board policy 2:40? I just have to make sure. 2:40, 2:50, 2:60, 7:185, 8:95, 4:100, 4:160, 5:250, 5:330, and 5:30. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? We had reviewed these at our last meeting, the changes were, in some of the cases, we were just doing a kind of a five-year touchpoint with them, just to make sure they were in order, and so we're just approving them as a formality to kind of memorialize that. Any other comments? Roll, roll call, please.
Kenny Casmer.
Yes.
Gavin Newman.
Yes.
Leah Colster Lazzari.
Yes.
Mike Shackleton.
Yes.
Angela Wilcox.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
I was remiss, I was so excited about moving through our agenda that I forgot completely, I apologize. We want to welcome Dr. Margot Schmidt to our district, so I apologize.
Any thoughts here as you start your new role?
Yeah, thank you for having me on the board, serving you and the community today.
Awesome, nice.
Thank you again.
Well, it's fitting tonight that you're here, we're going to be doing an SEL presentation, which is going to fall in your area of responsibility. So, timing's everything, right?
Timing is everything, I've already been making my checklist of everything that I need to be doing.
Well, we're excited to have you join us.
And I apologize again for
No worries.
...moving through this, but, thank you. Our next action item is K8, student lunch and breakfast prices. Is there a motion to approve? So moved. Okay.
Like two choices though, you have to pick which one you want.
You're right.
Want to clarify that? Want to clarify this? You want me to do that?
Yes.
At the finance committee, we had discussion on this item. The motion that I believe the board would consider, and you'll certainly want to verify that, is the administration represented option one. There are two options here, based on the conversation at the finance committee meeting. The first option would be to increase the hot lunch prices to $2.95 for the lunch price and $1.40 for the breakfast price. Now, that, in the memo, you saw that that was typically higher than what we typically have done, and I think that was some of the conversation we had at the finance committee meeting. So therefore, we put together a second option based on that conversation, which would coincide a little closer to CPI. And I don't know if Gavin, if you or Leah want to comment further, but essentially, that was, I think you wanted to look at that and have a little board conversation before moving forward.
Yeah, I think the part of the conversation was, you know, I think we've held prices steady for some time, the quality of the program's improving. I personally just said I thought a 5% jump year over year was a sizable jump, just from a percentage standpoint, but the actual dollars or cents in this case isn't necessarily significant, but a, but a 5% jump is a 5% jump.
Hence, we brought both, you know, forward for the board to discuss, and if, you know, again, the administrative recommendation was number one, just so you know. That was our recommendation, but I think there was concern about that, so we looked at what it would involve. If we were to do the other route, then we would have to contribute district dollars to that, in year one and subsequent years, unless we made adjustments in the future.
So Gavin, are you saying that we have been increasing 5% year over year?
No, I think we've held it flat for three years? Four, two?
Two years.
Two years we've held it flat.
We only bring it, we only do it when it's like enough to make a difference usually, but this time, we've needed to move it up, based on our change in programming, our upping of the quality of food, with our new contract, things like that, so that's why.
Lunch equity is part of it, as well as requirement of national school lunch program, which typically requires an annual or every other year increase.
So, again, administration's recommendation is to add the extra nickel as proposed, but certainly, you know, we comfortable doing it either way, it's just wishes the board.
Any other questions?
Angela, did you make the motion? Yeah, I'd like to make a, a motion to, to vote on the administrator's recommendation, is that how I, am I saying? Am I butchering it?
Yes.
Hopefully you guys all understand my.
Who's seconded?
Second.
Who made the original second?
I did.
Leah.
So, I can second.
Are you okay with that?
Sure.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
So, option, option one is what we're voting on?
Option one. I know, you say, I knew someone was going to understand.
I wanted to just clarify.
Do you have a note?
No.
Leah Colster Lazzari.
Yes.
Mike Shackleton.
Yes.
Angela Wilcox.
Yes.
Barry Alshuler.
Yes.
Penny Casimir.
Yes. Motion passes. Okay, the custodial service contract renewal, is there a motion to approve the custodial service contract renewal as presented? Any discussion, do you want to say anything about this?
This one's pretty straightforward. Dave, any brief comments?
Here, please, that this is not the same, we're renewing a recommendation for renewal that's below CPI.
And everyone, folks at the high school and in your office are pleased with the service we've received from this company. Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Leah Colster Lazzari.
Yes.
Mike Shackleton.
Yes.
Angela Wilcox.
Yes.
Barry Alshuler.
Yes.
Penny Casimir.
Yes.
Gavin Newman.
Yes.
Leah Colster Lazzari.
Yes.
Mike Shackleton.
Yes.
Angela Wilcox.
Yes.
Barry Alshuler.
Yes.
Penny Casimir.
Yes.
Gavin Newman.
Yes.
Leah Colster Lazzari.
Yes.
Mike Shackleton.
Yes.
Angela Wilcox.
Yes.
Barry Alshuler.
Yes.
Penny Casimir.
Yes.
Gavin Newman.
Yes.
Leah Colster Lazzari.
Yes.
Mike Shackleton.
Yes.
Angela Wilcox.
Yes.
Barry Alshuler.
Yes.
Penny Casimir.
Yes.
Gavin Newman.
Yes.
Leah Colster Lazzari.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the beverage management services contract.
So moved.
Second.
I'm going to turn over to Dave, and I know Leanne, you spent a significant amount of time working on this, and comments for the board. We had a lengthy discussion on this in finance committee as well.
Yeah, I'll just introduce this, the district has an exclusive, expiring exclusive relationship with Pepsi. There are two major players in the beverage market, Coke and Pepsi. Leanne Taylor has spent a lot of time investigating, researching, and negotiating on behalf of the district, what the options might look like, to provide a solution for our food service program, for our athletic program, and other sales, including in lounges, teachers' lounges, for beverages, and provide the maximum opportunity for return to the district in turn, in return for having exclusive, as well as exploring what other options might be besides that. And what you have before you is the resulting contract that provides some limitations on potential price increases, that provides reasonable prices that we can accommodate and make our food service programs successful, and still continue to provide the kinds of beverages and resources for the district that we're used to seeing. And then, if there are more detailed questions that the board might have, I will turn it over to Leanne.
I think Leanne did a really good job of working with our new vendor, specifically at the high school, to make sure, from a pricing standpoint, as we move forward, fits into their overall program. I don't want to steal your thunder, but I think.
Just going to tout you.
Well done.
Thank you.
I did have one question. I know we've, you know, since we've moved away from the school lunch program, the restrictions on what we can have and serve, in terms of sugar and things like that, have gone away. I mean, we have our own policy, of course. Is the, is the plan to keep the same types of drinks that we have for sale at the high school now the same?
Same sizes, same drinks.
And keep it shut off until?
Now, that we don't have to do.
We don't have to do that anymore.
It's not us, it's not asking us to do that, so the vending machines can stay on during the day, that was a national school lunch program complex, not under contract. But we can, we can have that discussion, you know, it's just, we, especially vending contracts or vending machines down there will buy athletics, kids could purchase K-8 or 1, or whatever, there's a matter of course, same.
It's national school lunch.
But it's.
I do think, you know, that's, that's almost, it's like an administrative procedure type of scenario. You know, certainly, I mean, I'm going to lean on Steve and his team at the high school level to manage that and maintain it. My guess is, I don't want to speak for Steve, I haven't really talked with him about that particular timing issue, they're not probably not going to want to, they're going to want to manage it, because they don't want the disruption throughout the day, so, they may have it isolated. I'm not sure what they're thinking, Dave, did you talk to him at all? I didn't either. No, but, but I think you characterized it exactly right. We're not looking to make a change at the high school with this new contract, but it does provide some additional flexibility, not being on the national school lunch program, and I think as time goes by, we will adjust to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our students and, and our educational focus as well.
And I think in a broader picture, you know, Penny mentioned it, and I know Barry, I talked with you briefly about it, we have a, you know, a wellness policy that really kind of umbrellas this whole thing.
Right, and it's, it's pretty robust.
It is.
So, you know, if we see that we are, like, moving towards making changes, can we make sure that we talk about this in policy, to make sure that it adheres to our, you know, our wellness policy? I mean, it's something that, you know, we crafted as a district, that kind of gives not only just, you know, like, our overarching goals, as far as nutrition and healthy eating and non-sugary foods and things like that, so I just want to make sure that we're.
Are you asking that if changes are made, that would trigger a change in the policy?
Right.
That it should be discussed in policy?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We don't know today, but it might, I don't know. You know, the one thing that we're not going to do, that we could do, is sell sugar soda. We could do that. We're not going to, okay, just for the record, it's not going to happen, but because we're off the program, yeah, exact is one of Barry's, you know, concerns, we're not going to do that.
The norm, like, when I went to all the schools that were off program, they are selling, right, they are selling regular coffee.
Yep.
One of the things that I also took off, because our summer, our summer starts July first, and our vendors do have summer school at the high school, I was very meticulous, went through what candy was listed, I said, no, very meticulous, selling candy, sorry, take that off. You know, we're doing a really good job, in my opinion, I'm continuing to work with the wellness committee, continuing to work with our vendor, continuing to work with Pepsi, and hopefully sell the things that legally very high schools should have out there, in terms of candy, no candy. And the parent advisory committee, that's right, I forgot, those important people, and they're meeting with them, with our vendors this week and stuff, so, lots of input to make sure that we're comfortable, and I hear what you're saying, Angela, the policy.
Is it a policy today?
I can't remember, I don't know that it specifically, like, our wellness policy is to, you know, provide healthy, I mean, and it's, it's very robust, it even goes into, like, you know, using, not using food as either a punishment or reward, and, you know, and all of these, like, different, but it definitely focuses on providing healthy nutritional options, and we may need to look also, because I want to say, does it, does it, no, 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 we, we made sure that it doesn't refer to the, the language, the specific language of the.
We reviewed it.
Okay.
We did, remember, before we went down this path, we did review it. Both of them, the wellness and the food service policy.
So, from what I understand, we're able to, per policy, the vending machines can be open all day long, or is that, would that be, because I want to make sure.
No, the policy's silent on it, it's just practice, you know, but what I'm saying is we're not handcuffed by the national school lunch program like we haven't been in the past.
But, but will that impact our negotiations with Quest? Well, no, Quest or Pepsi.
Quest was fine, with the vending machines being on, because, first of all, you have to remember, the ones that kids are probably going to use are way at the other end of the building, maybe first hour, and purchase a bottle of water or something in the athletic area, that they couldn't do before. And that might be one area that Steve wants them to have example, again, I think what Brian says is correct. Neither have mentioned, as we know, Pepsi know that we're going off program, and the vending machines could be on longer, absolutely, but I don't, they base their numbers on what we've always done, which is more natural.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Wilcox. Barry Alshuler.
Yes.
Penny Casimir.
Yes.
Gavin Newman.
Yes.
Leah Colster Lazzari.
Yes.
Mike Shackleton.
Yes.
Angela Wilcox.
Yes.
Thank you, and finance for.
No, the policy's silent on it. It's just practice, you know. But what I'm saying is we're not handcuffed by the National School Lunch Program like we haven't been in the past.
But, but will that impact our negotiations with Quest? Well, no, Quest or Pepsi?
Quest was fine with the vending machines being on, because first of all, you actually remember the ones that kids are probably gonna use are way at the other end of the building, maybe first hour, and purchase a bottle of water or something in the athletic area that they couldn't do before. And that might be one area that Steve wants them to have example. Again, I think what Brian says is correct. Neither have mentioned that if we're going on Pepsi, know that we're going off-program and the vending machines could be on longer, absolutely. But I don't, they base their numbers on what we've always done, which is more natural.
Any other questions? Roll call, please. Wilcox, Barry Alshuler.
Yes.
Penny Casimir.
Yes.
Gavin Newman.
Yes.
Leah Colster-Lazari.
Yes.
Mike Shackleton.
Yes.
One more. Is there a motion to approve the copier buyout and lease?
Second.
Give this back to you.
We will.
This one's a little bit more complex.
This is, I don't quite get it. Lots of attachments.
We spent another lengthy amount discussion at Finance Committee meeting. I'm gonna let Dave and maybe Leanne talk a little bit about this one in a big-picture perspective, so the full board understands what we're recommending here.
And I'll do the same things I did before. I'll provide brief introduction to it, and then if you've got questions, you know, be the right person to be able to answer. When the district did a refresh on its copiers, the copy center was not an area that was done recently. We've got equipment there that is in, very, that's old, some worn out and not functioning consistently. This is an opportunity to refresh the equipment in the copy center, to tie it back with a company, the company's proven, that provides service and support for our other copiers across the district, which we've been very pleased with, unlike the current service that we've got from the company that's providing the copiers in the copy center. So, in doing this, it's fairly common that when companies are looking to roll things together and to capture all of the business, they do look at opportunities to buy out leases and propose that to school districts. It's certainly something I've done more than once in the past. I suspect that Barrington's done that as well in the past. This is an opportunity where Proven is willing to step in, buy out the existing leases, replace the equipment, and bring it all together along in a unified package with the rest of our copiers.
I think, you know, if the board remembers a year or two ago, when we, one of the major challenges we had with staff across the district was copy machines. I'm looking at some of them. It was on every BEA agenda. Every time we would have a meeting was copy access, copy machines. And I can tell you, to my knowledge, I don't think that is the case whatsoever in any of the buildings today. We, you know, Matt and his team and working with the business office come up with a, you know, wonderful solution with Proven IT. And I think this, getting this online, the main production center with the rest of the copiers across the district is significant. You know, Steve Underwood was at the meeting who works in that space, and he said, you know, right now, teachers have to email him directly. Then he loads it right with this system. They'll be able to directly input it to him. He'll copy it out. There'll be, you know, no delay and get the stuff right back to the buildings, to every staff member across the district. So...
Which then encourages, I mean, the copies there are less, so it encourages that...
It's a lot cheaper. That's exactly right.
Just to reinforce Dr. Harris' comment, I will tell you that in the last dozen years, I have not gone a month without one or many complaints about copiers. And in the last 11 and a half months here in Barrington 220, I have heard zero complaints about our copiers. And I think that speaks very highly to the copiers and the support that we have with Proven. And I will be excited to have the copy center copiers rolled into that.
And it is a cost savings based on our current, you know, expenses.
Kind of.
That's correct.
Kind of.
The other interesting thing that I learned was that with the paper, using less paper and being accountable for paper by building and by staff, that it saved that way, but it also saves on the use of the copy machines. And that if you have the super-duper copy machine at the high school, the copy center, you're using the other copiers out and about less. So, they're breaking down less and it's more efficient overall, was kind of what I learned. So, it's, it's good in many ways that I didn't understand. So...
I think this is kind of the last of the larger purchases. I feel like we have been asked, this will be the second occasion to kind of expand on our copier-type centers, if you will, at the individual schools, where we did a trial pilot, and then obviously here at the high school. But also on the flip side is, this piece of equipment is old, and we would have to either replace it shortly or get a significantly expensive service policy. And I think that this is probably the cheaper route to go, albeit not ideal.
And if I read it right, the accessories, the bindings, things like that, which aren't, which are failing, are also part of this package. So...
As long as we can get the buildings outside the high school to use this, I think we'll save significant money across the board.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please. Barry Alshuler.
Yes.
Penny Casimir.
Yes.
Gavin Newman.
Yes.
Leah Colster-Lazari.
Yes.
Mike Shackleton.
Yes.
Angela Wilcox.
Yes.
Motion, Karen. Thank you and Finance for reviewing all of those things.
Beth Jones.
So, discussion items. You have a presentation for us?
We do. Social-emotional learning. And I know, I'm gonna ask the team that's here tonight, members of the committee that John had referenced in his write-up here. I know the board has a lengthy memo explaining some of the work that we've done over the past year in regards to social-emotional learning in our district. It has been a board target and priority, as the board is aware, to focus in on the needs of our students across the district. So, we're excited to have several staff members here tonight, and as soon as they are seated, I'm gonna...
Whoa, that was almost a disaster.
Yikes. We're having an SEL presentation.
I'm gonna turn it over to them.
With some VHS alums sitting here, too, I see.
I don't wanna steal any more thunder here, 'cause I know a lot of this is embedded in their comments.
No, thank you, Dr. Harris. Thank you, Board of Education. Just kidding. I'm just not sharing presenting. We're excited. Last year, we had the opportunity to present for the beginning of the work that we did in just a very short amount of time. And so, we're really excited to present this, the continuation of that work. And it's really, it has been a labor of love, and I don't wanna speak too much for the committee here. So, before we get started, I want, you know Beth Jones and I, but I'll let them introduce themselves.
Joanie Bell, I'm very happy to be here. I just wanna share, I love 220. My family moved here in 1958. And I graduated from Barrington High School 42 years ago. My children graduated from Barrington High School. I have other family members who graduated from 220. The flag in the stadium is dedicated to my father. So, this is home for me. So, being on this committee isn't just part of my professional goals, it's also home, and it's near and dear to my heart, and it's important to me. So, I'm just feel, it's been in my 22 years at the high school, probably the best committee I've been on. So, because things happen. So, it's, I love that.
And your role, maybe all the board members know.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm a counselor. I'm a counselor, sorry. I'm a counselor at the high school, and I also coordinate the advisory program, which, for freshmen to seniors, which is a multi-layered curriculum, one of which those pieces is very much social-emotional.
I'm Kathleen Duffy. I'm also an alum of Barrington High School, so...
Latin.
Later on. I teach history, and I'm getting my type 25 right now. So, one of the things I was interested in is how to get more involved in committees. And then I also fell in love with social-emotional learning, 'cause I felt like we were making kids into robots instead of holistic humans.
I'm Pam Captain. I've been at Hawk Street, 'cause I'm their grade teacher for 10 years, but I'm actually moving school next year to Lions, as the extended resource teacher there. And I actually, after the committee got started, I asked to join the committee. It's some social-emotional that's near and dear to my heart. As a teacher, I feel like I sort of stay, it's all levels, but elementary, really making sure we touch on the heart of the students in order to get the academic part. And so, this committee spoke to me, and I've loved every minute of it since then.
And she'll continue on the committee despite moving buildings.
Mind you, we've had multiple people actually request to be on this district committee. Just let that sink in for a second.
It doesn't happen, though.
We're a good group.
Do you have really good snacks at your meetings?
No, I've been remiss this year. Admittedly, I have been remiss. Yeah, I have to do better about that. Mere opportunity for me. All right, so with that, I'll turn it over to Kathleen.
Okay, so we, one of the goals when we first started thinking about the committee was having more educators than administrators. And we then, once we had a couple of meetings, recognized that we didn't have every school represented, so we went out and kind of recruited and/or had people like Pam join who wanted to be a part of it. So, there's a smattering of titles, but the district seems to be really well-represented based on our meetings and our progress. And people are still asking, like, one of our librarians just asked me, "How do I get on the committee?" And I was like, "You just come."
Or email John.
Yep.
Okay. So, today, we're gonna go through the timeline review. We're gonna talk about the process that we've gone through, and we're gonna give you the progress update from 2018, 2019. We're going to talk about the data review that we've done, as we've gathered some information that we've never had in the past. And then we're gonna talk about our goals for 2019, 2020. So, the process timeline to begin with, when John and I started, the board had created the goals of working on the social, had social-emotional learning goals for us. And so, at that time, we didn't have any data to use to even know how to move forward with the goals, because you need baseline data, obviously. So, in the 18 months, we've given multiple SEL surveys. We did those through Panorama. We've begun to create a site-based goals at our different schools. So, based on the information that we've gleaned from those surveys, we've been able to have our schools come up with their own goals that they wanted to have within each climate and culture in each building. We then started training staff on responsible use of the data that they have. So, something we were concerned about is that we don't want staff misusing the data or using this as your only data point. So, I think we've done a really good job with all of that. The MTSS process is also something where Kimberly Foster-Thomas, who just recently retired, has been overseeing our MTSS process. And we are, she focused mostly on elementary. And this year, we're lucky to have Heather Shivoika also join us as our new MTSS coordinator. And she has a specialty in the area of secondary. So, I think that's gonna help us with some of the older students as well, as we get this data and work with teams on how to best use it.
Sort of just thinking back actually on what Beth said, is I think the goals from this year that we worked hard on was looking at the data and helping these school teams understand how to use the data, different ways to use the data, and then training on different scenarios based on that data, and then having that be brought to the problem-solving team meetings. And looking at the parent and teacher and student surveys for, look at the holistic approach of a child. And I think one of the things about being on this committee for me as well, as an elementary school teacher, there were so many things that were happening at the high school and middle school level, but I had no idea as a staff member. And so, being on this committee has like just opened my eyes to so many things that are going on and helping bridge the elementary, middle school, and high school to the different things that are happening. I think it's so important, because we have so many things happening through BSTR. I didn't know much about BSTR and all the things that were happening there. So, I now can have a voice within elementary schools and sharing that information. And then having the permanent committee, the SEL committee is great.
This is, at the high school particularly, we have teams that meet bimonthly with counselors, deans, psychologists, social workers, and using the ECR data and helping us determine, using the data as another resource point to help students when we're trying to figure out what is going on when the student's not thriving. And we're actually in the process these last couple of days of planning a training session, the second day of our institute day in August prior to school starting, with all counselors, deans, psychologists, social workers, Nick Yeager, who's our pathways coordinator, that's our evening school, and wellness team members as well, to fully understand how to access the PLP, the Personal Learning Plan, and then the ECR data, and how we can use that to support students as another resource and tool. So, the wellness team is something that is at the high school at this point. And we've talked about kind of getting it solidified at the high school level, so that we could use this also in our other, like, middle school, you know, middle school teams. But the wellness team is a multidisciplinary team. And this is something that Steve actually came up with, was an idea he had. He said he's got the red, white, and black teams, and it would be like the social worker from the white team, and the, you know, social worker from the black team, and the social worker from the red team. And they would all sit on teams with the psychologists and different, you know, counselors and some of the teachers, and they would talk about student issues that were happening. And sometimes when you put a team together like that, you tend to not have all the team members attend on a consistent basis, because there might be a crisis on the white team, and the social worker and the psychologist have to leave. Or you tend to sit and glorify the problem as opposed to figuring out, "What can I do? How can I really do an intervention?" Because you're all sitting in problem-solving as opposed to being with the students. So, Steve wanted to look at a different model. So, he came up with a model where there's the red and the white team, and the alphabet is just split. And then we've got the wellness team that is somewhat of a team that, we started out calling it like a SWAT team, but it's actually like a team that, you know, when we see students that are struggling, we actually have a place for them to go within the building. There's, you know, a room that they can go to where they can meet up with, we'll talk about some of the members. I think Joanie's gonna talk about that a little bit. But the team members are able to work with the students in either one-on-one, or they're able to go into classrooms, and they're able to work with staff members to talk about how you can give interventions for students right there on the spot in the setting. Because our main goal, obviously, as an educational facility, is to keep kids in the classroom and to help them be healthy while they're there. The, from the counseling standpoint, I can't say enough wonderful things about the wellness team and what a great added resource it has been. Just one example, I have a student who was school refusal and just, you know, talked to the mom, talked to the student, couldn't figure out, "How can we get her in the building?" One of the wellness team members is working with her, and in the last probably four weeks of school, she didn't miss one day, and is passing her classes. So, I mean, things like that, that the interventionists have more time as well than a regular counselor would have to do that kind of regular, even daily interventions, to help. And knowing that we can, if there's a crisis in our office, we have an additional resource down there that we can, again, team with someone, with the wellness members. And I know, I've, you know, again, all of the counselors have worked with them, and the results have been immense. Just, and the connections that kids are making are just so positive and such a great support. So, it's been a huge enhancement.
I would say, too, as a classroom teacher, it's more open or a kid a pass to the wellness center, because they're recognizing their mental health. And instead of just sending them to the nurse or they're going to the bathroom, they're actually getting the help that they need. They're more likely to come back to class if they go to the wellness center than if they are to go somewhere else in the building. And it's been really nice to see those students, like Joanie said, who might miss a couple of days, and then they're encouraged to come back if they're nervous. And we're talking about something that's usually taboo, and it's allowing them to have that space to grow.
And we also have had a decrease in the number of hospitalizations this year. The decrease has been from about, and I don't have exact numbers, and we have it, like 51 or 53 down to about 31 students have been hospitalized. So, I mean, that's a huge decrease. Is it due to the wellness team? I think we'll figure that out as we continue and get more data. But we're feeling like they're, like you just said, that, you know, they're able to get help on-site, and they're able to get help when they need it, so they can get back into class instead of trying to figure out how to deal with this on their own, and then ending up needing greater level of support. So, the dashboard on the, I was looking at it the other day, my ECR screen on one of my students, and I was just amazed at all the information I had at my fingertips, from academic testing information to the results of the survey. And aligning all that to seeing, is this student thriving, or where are areas of concern? And so, that's where the counselors and the deans and the social workers and the psychologists, having access to that is just, it's kind of one-stop shopping. So, it's, again, it helps answer some questions or leads us in a direction to problem-solve further.
To give you a visual idea of what the dashboard looks like, it's got your traditional academic attendance and behavior information, but it also incorporates the SEL data and some personal statements, or it will next year. So, it sort of gives the counselor, it gives counselors, social workers, any of our related services personnel, sort of that holistic view of the student they're looking at versus just the, just the numbers.
Yeah.
You know, it gives them that sort of, who are they as a person feel as well, and which is really important.
We hadn't had that in the past.
No, but this is the first year we've ever had that. And we've got significant data that the traffic in the PLP within the ECR system has tripled within, tripled within weeks of us putting it out there and making it apparent. So, it's, people, you know, it speaks to the heart of who educators are, which is people who care about kids. And when you put information about how students are feeling and doing, they wanna know. And so, that's a great sign.
And I think also when you look at, when we're at problem-solving meetings at the MTSS table, and being able to pull up the history of academics and social-emotional, and, you know, a lot of times we have a lot of intuitions about things, but still keeping it driven to what we can see there on the screen and tying it all together is really beneficial for everyone.
It's exciting. So, I have the privilege of going over some of the data and numbers. And you have more detail in the memo, but I just wanna point out, so these are our, this is the results from year two from the Panorama survey. So, we know that we've got a large group of students at grades three through five within the district. So, it's really difficult to move the needle with a large group of students on a scale that's zero to five. So, we're happy that most of our areas stayed relatively constant, or stayed constant. But we had some movement in a couple of our areas, our emotional regulation and overall, the aggregate scores at the elementary level. So, that's a, that's a good thing. Nobody went down. We stayed where we were, which is very strong as it is, and went up in a couple of areas. And you can see emotional regulation moved up, and it actually moved up to the 80th to 99th percentile. So, we're excited about that. Our area of continued future focus for the elementary remains grit, just like it was last year. All of our elementary principals created a goal at their building, an SEL goal related to grit. So, we're working on it. It did move up from the last year, but not up to the place that we want it to be. So, we're working on it.
I could add a celebration or something to that.
Please.
At Hawk, I know, one of the things is we took a lot of this information that we received and we looked at the data. And we were seeing a trend of students who, we used to do a citizenship award at the end of the year, and we were just recognizing one student at the end of the year. But after looking at some data and like collecting, the students that were receiving these awards were also on student council and other areas where they were getting a lot of accolades. And there were many students who would say, "I'll never be able to get that." We just, we took all this information and we decided to make what we call the Pride Award. And monthly, students are being recognized in their classrooms and around the school, using these areas of growth mindset and grit, and like things that the teachers are noticing, they're writing on the cards, it's presented, you might see on Twitter, and things that, they'll take a picture with Mr. Offs once a month with those. And just from all of this, some changes are being made right there to help students all feel like they can, you know, feel looked at highly for the different things they're doing.
And I would just say, from a district lens, one of the things that's really exciting about this work, too, is that all of the buildings are using similar language, but they're implementing things that they feel fits the culture and climate of their building. So, there's still that individual building autonomy to do what they, and experiment and work with their children, but they're using the same language moving forward. And so, you see that here at the secondary level as well. We were excited that, again, just like the elementary, and granted, this is only two, two data points, but that we stayed constant overall in all of the areas and went up into self-management. And one of our, one of the specific board goal areas was social awareness, which went up. So, we're excited about that. That's a really positive trend that we're happy about. So, I thought the board would be happy with that as well. And these are, by the way, this is independent data. We don't cook these books at all. We don't have any. So, just so you know. So, yeah, so we're excited about that. Again, same area of growth as last year, same as the elementary, which is grit, which, again, did see positive increases, but not to the, not to the place that we would like it to be. So, still an area of growth, still an area that we're working on. But as Pam said, it's, we're targeting those areas more intentionally now.
As highlighted earlier, the wellness center is doing wonderful things. I had the privilege of working with the wellness center to put on like a wellness week. It was called Be Well. And we featured different types of things, like how to deal with interpersonal violence, domestic violence, issues of consent, which is in the... We had Detective Smith push us through the videos, and other deans, and so that all the kids saw something, and we had things. So, that's hoping going to be a yearly thing at the high school that we'll keep doing. Pam did some mindfulness training at the university.
Mindfulness, but also like kind of motivating, what some people call unmotivated students, or I used a new term, other motivated students. And I think that it was very well-received. There were teachers there as well as classified staff that came, and it was just well-received, I think, and people really wanted to learn more and do more to help.
I also had the privilege of working with the middle schools on the new social studies curriculum, which the elementary has done, but the middle schools are trying to do as well with inquiry. So, they're trying to build some of the SEL skills into the inquiry. And then lastly, what is not up here, but one of the celebrations is through this committee, I was emboldened to ask some others' teachers to be part of an equity team at the high school, and we are challenging the achievement gap. And we had some really interesting data that came out. We were able to... We were able to push up all of our Hispanic students, both, um, high income and low income and trying to get more AP classes and the numbers stayed pretty much the same. So, they didn't score lower than the other, other groups. And, uh, our team has gotten quite big and we have other things targeted, but it was because of this committee that, um, that team was created.
There's so many celebrations, to be honest, when we started, we called them down to just some exemplars here, but, um, I, I know I speak for the committee when I say we're, we're proud, we're, there are a lot of things that are happening that if we had the whole committee here, we could, we could do a separate presentation just on the things we're really happy about and they're genuine. So, we're excited about the work we're doing with and for the kids. Um, here's where we're going and where we hope to go is that we want to continue to refine our data collection and integration processes within our MTSS and problem solving teams. We want to bring that data to, um, the teacher level. We want teachers to, to be able to understand and know how to use that data to better support the students in their classroom, to be able to plan more appropriately, more accurately, and also to be able to be intentional with building and continuing to build those skills that we know are lifelong skills in our students. So, while SEL is a focus within the schools, I, I want to take this time to just say, these are lifelong skills. We know that these are the skills that support student growth beyond the, the pre-K-12 Barrington experience, beyond college into the workforce. And so, what, these are the skills we want to continue to grow. And part of that is just knowing where the students are at and then how we can help them grow in those areas both of strength and of their deficiencies. Um, we want to continue to integrate those, those data metrics, again, as I said, in the MTSS problem solving teams. Um, we want to continue to focus on grit system-wide. We know that that's our area of opportunity and so, we're going to continue to focus on that. And we have, like I said, we've made some gains, but we want to continue to make gains. Um, we don't want to plateau right now because we're not even close to where we want to be. We want to bring grit up to where those other levels are. Um, we also are working on, and this is where the work of, of the committee comes in. This is not our work, to quite frankly. Um, this was their suggestion. They want to do it. But as we begin to refine our data collection and metrics in the areas that we're focusing on for SEL, we also want to design a playbook for teachers so that they can integrate these practices more effectively with their students and with groups of students. So, it's, okay, I've got five students who are struggling with self-management at grade three. Here are six or seven different ways that I can help those students grow in that area. So, it's not just, it's, it's one thing to recognize there is an issue. It's another thing to provide support in how to help those students. And that's what we're developing for next year. Um, and we're developing it organically. There are supports out there, but this is a Barrington two-twenty thing and we're going to support the students the way we think we, we can.
I could just add on.
Please.
When Dr. Go came to our last meeting, looking at the, you know, our curriculum has so many places for us to do that, but it's sometimes about taking the two and putting them together for a teacher to realize it's not one additional thing. It's not teaching second steps at a separate time, but integrating our social studies curriculum is wonderful for all of this as well as our literacy and writing. Um, so, I think that it's really important to help the teachers feel like this is not an addition.
This is education. We know it is. So, that's a great point. I'm glad you brought that up. Yeah, we're also looking on areas where we are teaching these things, being intentional in how we teach them and focusing on them so the students know the language we're speaking. Um, we want to continue to build relationships with outside agencies. We want to continue to, we have the data. We don't want to keep it a secret. Granted, we can't provide student data to outside agencies, but we do want to continue to work with Be Strong to say, here's what the students are saying they need, here's what the families are saying, so let's provide the resources and target those resources to what the needs of the students are. And so, we're excited to be able to be working with, with Be Strong on helping them provide targeted resources for our students and based on the needs of the community. And then finally, um, you know, these are, the 2020 and beyond just kind of gets to this idea of can we get to, to, to classroom-level data in the SEL realm that allows teachers to better plan within their classrooms to meet the needs of students with a playbook, but also with, with real-time holistic student data that is not just numbers, but also represents how they're doing in terms of feeling in a, in a social, emotional way. That's where we're going. Um, we're hoping to have it before 2020, but we, we feel pretty good about the progress we're making on that and we're excited about that. When we presented that to some, some of the teachers, um, they said that would be the most amazing thing they've ever seen. So, so, not very often that you get a piece of data that they say, this is amazing. So, um, we're excited about that and the plan. So, with that, what questions might you have?
Doing good work.
Any questions?
I just want to make one comment about the committee and I say this, I mean, everywhere we go, but I feel like a proud mom every time I work with them because they show up ready to work and it's the most productive couple hours of our days, you know, sometimes. And it's, it's just amazing. They take the ball and run with it always.
We love them.
Yeah, we're really proud of, we're proud of our committee. So, just one.
They're amazing.
Yeah, all those people up there, great people.
Yes.
I think one of the things I just want to add that you didn't see in the memo and, and I know John and Beth are aware of this and maybe the, the committees might be, you know, we are stretching a couple of our vendors right now to get us the, the rest, the ability to do some of this stuff. And, uh, you know, that, nobody else has created it, just so you're aware. What we're trying to do here is, it, it doesn't exist out there in the marketplace. So, we're pushing on, you know, I mentioned ECR a couple of times and, and Forecast Five's another vendor. We feel used a lot with our financials. They're also getting into the Studa, student side of things. So, we're pushing on them to create a dashboard or a data point. We're working on that. We're not there yet. But, you know, you know how your board sees the financial, um, uh, projections? Well, we're, we're working on a student side of all this and, and it doesn't exist. And, uh, we're trying to create this. So, we're working on that just so, that's kind of a big picture thing that I personally am directly involved in. And, and I, I don't know how much of that you know, but I've been pushing on them pretty hard to get us, you know, a tool that, develop a tool. They have to create it, you know, with their software designers and, and get it figured out to how to be able to get this data in the hands of our staff.
Well, we have something. We'd be happy to share it with you.
Yep.
We have templates, but we don't have the actual yet.
Mm-hmm.
It's exciting though. And I, I know I speak for, for our practitioners, our committee members here. They're, but they're really the ones who pushed us to push on the vendors. You know, it, it was their, their, they were craving this information in really usable formats. And so, we were the ones who said, hey, it's not us. They want it, you know?
I know that SEL is a high priority for the board and I know that we've talked about, you know, having every aspect of the student taken care of and, you know, kind of wrapping the entire stu, every staff member to be able to kind of wrap their arms, if you will, you know, around the student. And so, nobody falls through the cracks. And so, it's exciting to hear that this is a tool that's really helping in that area.
Any other questions or comments?
Any idea when they'll have that next data, really?
So, I, funny that you should, I just got off the phone with ECR, um, what time is it? About four hours ago. And, um, they're targeting a soft launch for us only in November. So, I'm, I'm actually thinking probably December or January. Um, but we will, we will have our unique data points. Um, we will begin harvesting those. Uh, it's a weird way to say it, but we'll begin harvesting that information in September and October. So...
Collecting?
Yep. Yep, we'll be collecting that. We'll also be collecting, um, qualitative information on the students as well, which is something new for us to give them a voice in their learning. Who are they as learners? What are their goals? Um, so that we see that too as, as our practitioners, our counselors, our social workers, our teachers. Um, that's an important voice. So, even though the, we're quantifying, seems weird to say, we're quantifying the social, emotional aspect, but we are going to collect qualitative information as well. We're hoping, hoping by the new year.
So, on the memo that we saw that had the click on this and you see the questionnaires, are those the real questionnaires that the students surveyed that they answered? And are other districts using those, but not really able to, like, share them with the staff as much? Or are we kind of on the cutting edge or, like, are other, you know?
Do you want me to answer that? Okay. Um, yes and yes. So, other districts are using it, um, but the tricky part is integrating a different software system into our learning management system, our, our student, or I should say our student information system. So, that's been the tricky part. And I will say we've got, Matt's team has been incredible. June Millis has, has worked tirelessly to help support, bring that information from our Panorama vendor into our student information system, which then goes to ECR for the personalized learner profile. Um, it, it was, it was a, a difficult get, but quite honestly, Leah, it came from, um, the demand from, from our, from our committee to say, we need that information as part of the personalized learner profile. That's what we need. So, we figured out a way to do it.
Interesting. I asked my kids, I'm like, did you take this quiz, you know? And they had no idea what I was talking about. Because I looked at the questions and, and to me, and maybe I'm strange, it looked like it was easy to tell what the right answer was. Like, and they said, well, was it anonymous, Mom? And I said, I don't, but it had to be student-specific so you know who they are, right? So, it was...
The language was different before we changed vendors. So, we had looked at Panorama and we had kind of sat down and we didn't like some of the language. So, we asked, like, could they change it up or mix up with doing Spanish? And the vendor told us why we switched.
Well, they did. It's, it's the Panorama.
That's a new one. Okay.
Yep, yep. But we are switching vendors. We're, we're actually, which will make it a lot easier for us. We're gonna, we already have a partnership with ECR and they've developed, I think, a more reliable tool. It's, it's, it's going to be more tested. Uh, it will be more rigorous to your point, um, depending on the level. It'll be more student-friendly though. And the, the great thing is it will, it will work seamlessly into our system so that we'll get the results right away. Whereas with some of this stuff, it, it took us probably three, four months to get the data and then get it over. I mean, it will be three to four minutes.
Well, I think also that, you know, the word we use, like, it was not really, it was like, you know, trying to talk about as a survey more and that even though maybe there is a right answer or you think there's a way that we wanted the kids to feel like, we really just want to get to know you. They know they take math tests, they get to know them academically. And that this kind of a survey helps us and by them answering as, you know, honestly as they feel and we know what's their feeling about themselves, not necessarily the end-all, be-all, but it helps us know where they're at in those moments.
It's interesting. Yeah.
How, how are the parents interacting with this? I mean, how much information do they get from what you're doing? Or is this pretty much just at, staying at the school level and not necessarily, you know, leaving the school doors?
Right now, we're, we're working on our teams, um, just interpreting the data alongside all the other data we gather. So, when we work with parents, we just kind of put it in as another data point and just talk about the fact that the students have taken these surveys. We've only had the two that we've done. So, I think the discussions will become more rich with parents as we go forward. But we don't want people doing, it's like if your stu, if your child failed a math test, we don't want a teacher calling up and saying, we have this information and we're really worried about your child in math. There could have been, that's one data point and we want to make sure we keep it that way. That it's just one piece of information about a child. But I think, like I said, I think their conversations will become more rich and we will look at more interventions and way to help students and support families in that process as we continue to gather more data.
Thing too is we get, become more comfortable with the data.
Yeah.
It'll get much easier to report, right? And be able to, like Beth said, use it as part of parent conferences, use it as part of, you know, discussions around academic conversations and, and, you know, looking at it in the aggregate, not as an isolated item.
And it strengthens them that too. You know, your child has a lot of, like, grit. It could be really high. You know, we want to share that out so parents understand that as well.
Can our parents welcome on the committee?
On our committee?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, you've come to our committee.
So, they are.
Yeah.
So, I just, I mean, I think that's great.
I mean, some parts make it hard because we, we don't want to be having parents engaged in making the sausages, you say, but there are parts that we really want parent feedback. We want them to understand. When you came to our meeting, it was a good point for you to come in. You didn't have to sit through a selecting data tool.
I understood I'm invited to anybody I want to come to.
And you are, along with anyone else.
No, uh, so you have parents on the committee though regularly?
No, we do not.
Oh, you don't?
No.
No, we do not.
I thought you did. I thought...
Sort of the parent arm is really our connection with Be Strong at the moment.
And Barrington Youth and Family Services, we're reaching out through them to get, like, the parent side of things too. So...
Like, it's a typical thing with our curriculum committees. I mean, this is kind of in under that same umbrella. Like, you know, it's a staff, you know, um, uh, generated activity at this point. Um, I think as this evolves, it's maybe something, you know, to both of your questions, you know, how we can continue to, you know, engage the parent community and understand what this really means, right? But we got to get comfortable with it first and make sure we're, you know, before we take that next step. It's new for us to...
We're doing things that no one else has done.
Yeah.
We're trying to kind of tread cautiously as we move forward. Um, we don't want to withhold information. Probably one of the areas that we've talked about as a committee, sharing with parents first, is actually not the data piece, but the qualitative piece. So, a child, imagine your child writes, you know, at the beginning of the year, they, before they take the survey, they respond to a couple of just open-ended prompts, you know, how do you see yourself as a learner? As a parent, that's probably something you, you want to see, you want to know. How does, this is from the lens of your child, speaking to how they see themselves as a learner. What are their goals? What are their aspirations for career? Even as young as, as third grade. Um, you know, what, what, what do they feel they're going to need to learn to achieve their goals? To me, that's information that is pretty, pretty benign, um, but really, really helpful for a parent in how they're, how they can help their child at home. There are students, but they're your child. And so, we want, that's...
Totally agree with you. Um, I, like Leah, I went, showed the survey to my son, asked him if he remembered. Did he take this? And he said, oh, yeah. But it's not the kind of thing they come home and tell you, you know? If you don't ask them. And, and, you know, I am, so then I was able to ask him, so, you know, what'd you think of that question? Kind of get a sense of what they're thinking. Some parents will probably appreciate that.
And I think we need to get comfortable with that as with parents. I think parents need to be okay asking those types of questions and understanding why the district is, is asking those, you know, and making sure that we...
Some may and some may not.
Yeah.
I mean, at a minimum, you could even just communicate with the parent community that we're doing the survey with your kids and if they want to talk about it, they will. And if they don't...
Do send a letter up.
Yep, we do. Yep.
Okay?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Another question?
Sorry.
So, since we've been at school districts, we have an opportunity to see them all the way through. And, and I've heard of other school districts that have sort of a curriculum for this. Or do we look at something like that? Or is that something that we're still looking at and figuring out or?
We have.
We do.
Yeah. And I think what we're really looking at now is, is where in our curriculum can we more intentionally build in supports? And that's where that playbook comes in. Um, because a lot of the SEL supports can be integrated into a variety of different subject areas. So, while a curriculum is nice, what we really don't want it to seem like is that this is a standalone thing because how you're feeling, how you're doing, does affect how you're learning. And so, that's what we're trying to build into the classroom.
Just as an example, like, and we're doing advisories and we're talking to students about college planning. We also talk about, um, managing the stress of that process. And so, a social, emotional piece comes into it when we're talking about the logistics and management of applying to colleges. So, it's not just, here's how you do it, but there's also, you have these strengths. You're going to look at these strengths. You're, you have the supports here to help you through the process. So, there's a social, emotional component to all of that type of planning as well. And it's, it's integrated into the college curriculum in our advisories.
And just like we have standards for reading and writing and math and we have standards, SEL standards from ISBE from the state of Illinois. We have standards that you can look at and you can see, like, identifying obstacles that might, you know, be, be there when you're trying to achieve your goals is one of the standards. And so, how do students identify that? How do we work with them to say, this is an obstacle, but how are you going to achieve in spite of it? And so, we work with them. There, you can, I, you can, I can send you a link to that, just so you can see.
Capital standards, yep.
Are any of the college counselors involved on the committee?
Not the college counselors. As a counselor, I'm not, we have two col, two college counselors at the high school, but I do a lot of what a regular counselor's job is, does involve college advising. So, a critical mass of what we do is the college component. So, it's absolutely part of what we do on a regular basis.
And I started, I looked at, um, the second half is for the upper levels, but I did some other curriculums for the high school. A lot of them are, I, I felt like they were created by, like, non-educators who wouldn't, would be another thing that's, like, slopped on and doesn't really embed. And as I teach social studies, um, I kind of created a mini thing for the playbook that we're going to add into it. Mine's called Features All Fridays. And I'll take whatever worrying about, like, a book about deseg, or segregation. We'll talk about different activities that have to do with privilege and race. And the kids, it's like, take a chunk out of the day, but it always embeds in whatever we're learning. And, um, I saw a huge development. We did, like, these mini surveys through a program called the Engagement Project out of Stanford. And a science teacher and I saw huge improvements in students valuing their work and understanding the meaning and thinking that they belong and they can do things. And I'm happy to show that as well. And I'm happy to share that as well.
Thank you for doing all that stuff.
Just as another example, this past year, during a sophomore advisory, we knew from the data that grit was an issue. And so, we didn't say, "Oh, gosh, you guys took this survey and you really didn't score well on grit." But when we talked about reaching goals, we had, Naviance is another online resource that we have, and it has all these videos about leaders and people who are successful in just a multitude of varied fields. And so, as I was looking at the advisory plan for that, for the sophomores, I was looking at different videos that basically addressed grit. How did this person achieve their goals and reach their success and thrive? So, we showed about three videos of the sophomores and basically it was addressing grit, but not saying, "Oh, gosh, you, you know, scored poorly on this survey." But it was incorporated into reaching your goals and this is how you build your grit and self-awareness and things like that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for looking out for our kids.
Thank you.
It's our pleasure.
Can I ask, are policies time-sensitive?
Nope.
There's nothing time-sensitive. We can do within July.
Okay. Because we're trying to get out of here at a good time, do everything we can. So, let's move to our referendum discussion.
Got it.
And I believe...
They're going to help, buddy.
Well, we can try. We can try. We're on a calendar. So, my understanding is that we have a little bit of a financial presentation first.
We do. So, we're going to start here this evening. I think there's two things. We want to just spend some time, you know, discussing and make sure the board is clear about the actual bond and debt situation. So, I'm going to ask Dave and Bob Lewis, who's here from PMA, to join us here at the table. They prepared a presentation for you. You have a copy of it here at your table. It says referendum finance. And they're going to walk through this, but we finalized it, I think, today. And so, you got the most recent version here, as we were working through it over the last several days, preparing it for tonight. And it will not be lengthy, but we want to make, it actually captures and reviews the memo Dave shared with you two weeks ago. And, but we want to make sure the board is clear on what is available and what the, you know, scenario would be. So, I want to turn it over to Dave and Bob, and they're going to tag team us. All right now, there it is. There's your kids.
Oh, there's my kids. So, I actually, I tested this earlier today. I came in, I plugged in my computer. And I know that this is just a matter of mirroring my...
Hit her.
My stuff. So, the question is exactly how I do that. So, if our IT folks have any help for me, I would be cool with that.
I think they're trying to help.
You said you came in and tested.
I did. Yeah, I actually, I did. And it worked. And it worked. I plugged it in and magic happened. It was perfect.
We don't need no stinking presentation.
You know what it is? Dave's got the only PC in the district there, that HP.
No. It was John, actually.
Could you just walk us through? Yeah, just talk us through it.
I can.
If we get it figured out, we can catch up.
All right.
So, scroll through. We got it here.
Yeah. So, the goal was to try and sort of go through some school finance 101.
If you got to help him, go ahead.
You could still keep talking.
Okay. And when we start to think about the kinds of projects that the board is contemplating with the referendum, there really are a couple of options for a source of funds to be able to do this. One is fund balances and the other, and the other is...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is debt. Thank you. So, for fund balances, for the kind of project that, and I'll talk, actually, I'll talk through these. Under debt, we've got short-term and long-term debt. So, fund balances exist so that we have resources available to meet the district's cash flow needs, as well as provide a reserve in the event that we have some unexpected expenses. District 220 has a conservative fund balance policy that states that the board's targeting between 25% and 40% of fund balances. So, that's already a conservative policy. When we start to think about fund balance policy and the magnitude of expenses that you're contemplating for referendum to improve our facilities, the fund balance doesn't provide a viable option. And the board has made it a conscious point not to act as a bank for the community by storing up community members' taxes in order to make expenditures in the future. So, this board has been very conservative in that regard and keeps a small fund balance relative to the nature of the expenses that we have in our facilities.
For the benefit of the group, could you share with us the percentage?
We're just over 30% right now. The, I'm not going to talk about short-term debt, because that's not a reasonable source of funds for these types of expenditures. I'm just going to move right on to long-term debt. And there are two kinds of long-term debt that I want to talk about. The first is non-referendum debt. This is what around the district we refer to as our DCEB debt. And the amount of debt that we're able to borrow with our DCEB debt is limited by the tax cap law, with a dollar amount for an annual debt service related to what was owed back in 1995. This is money that the district is currently using to fund the majority of the summer projects that we do. It's about $2.1 million that's available. Here again, you have established a fairly conservative policy, which says that you're really going to try not to spend more than five years, or borrow more than five years' worth of money with the DCEB debt. And just to put that into perspective, one of the projects that you've been contemplating with the referendum is a safety-related measure to remove mobile classrooms and do some additions at our middle schools. You can't do that by staying within a five-year debt horizon. So, just that one piece of what you've contemplated for a referendum, we can't do with the DCEB debt.
And how quick are we paying that back today?
We're paying that back on an annual basis.
Which I think is important to know.
Yeah. So, which is well within the board's policy, but even doing a five-year, you still can't do even that one piece of the referendum you contemplated. On the referendum side, this is simply debt that is approved by the voters during a referendum. And I would just mention, and I know you're aware of this, but the referendum question limits both the dollar amount and the purpose for the funds. So, it's not a blank check that the board then has from the community to do whatever it wants. It is limited and tied to the referendum question. There is a statutory cap of the amount of total debt that's out there. So, the district couldn't ask for an unlimited amount. So, this next slide just shows you what the current debt capacity is. So, we basically take our equalized assessed valuation, multiply by the statutory limit of 13.8%, we subtract off existing outstanding debt, that leaves an available debt margin of $385 million. So, that would be the maximum under the statute that the district could borrow if it were so inclined to do so. So, just wanted to give you sort of the top end on the referendum side at the moment. I want to talk now a little bit about the debt issuance and repayment process. There are a lot of players that are involved in doing debt issuance. And board policy also does contemplate engaging with some of the experts, folks such as Bob Lewis, who's here with, from PMA, to talk about options. When we look to issue debt, there are three main ways that typically would be handled: competitive sale, negotiated sale, and direct placement. Now, about a third of the public debt issuance happens with a competitive sale and about two-thirds with a negotiated sale. But our board policy lays out that generally, we would use a competitive basis. And when we have a high bond rating and the magnitude of the debt that we have, typically competitive sale would make a lot of sense. So, I mentioned ratings. The district does have a standard and porous AAA-rated debt, which reflects low risk here at the district. And this is basically just like a credit score. And when we have a high rating, it's like having a great credit score. That means that we have access to borrowing at a lower interest rate that saves the district money and reflects us being a low-risk borrower.
When was that rating reaffirmed or affirmed?
Just recently was.
Bob, do you remember off the top of your head? It's not, it's not been in this calendar or this fiscal year.
No. The, usually you get that affirmed whenever you sell a bond, you get a public offer, but you haven't done a public offering in quite some time. And that's why I'm wondering. Yes. So, they occasionally do surveillance. I have, I can, we can get back to you on that question.
It was a couple of years ago. I was probably, it's been since I've been here. I know that we re-upped it. I know we did.
Right. But as soon, but as soon as your, some of these bonds that you have outstanding, those last couple of referendum bonds, those mature, you're actually, your rating goes away. Because there's nothing that they rate.
Well, I'm just thinking as we move forward, just to make sure we're still in the same zip code from a rating capacity?
It will be critical here, depending on what happens.
I'll verify this last time. It was affirmed. While increasing the debt is something to consider, just remember when it comes to ratings, debt and pensions make up 20%. Finances make up 30. Management makes up 20. And the local economy makes up 30, which, so you start from square one with a great local economy. So, that's your building block and you have great finances, great management. So, I don't think even with the passage of referendum, your AAA would be in jeopardy. Sort of like Hinsdale 86, who I work with, they have the same sort of basic, you know, strong economy, good finances. And the, just pass that massive referendum and then it causes the rating to go down.
All right. So, on the repayment side, just like with personal debt, the school district would repay debt, both interest and principal over time. But a little bit different than personal debt, there's the ability to actually structure the repayment between interest-only, principal-only, or principal and interest at the time the debt is issued. So, that's part of the closing documents on the debt issuance. It lays out exactly what the repayment schedule is. Once that is in place, the district files that information with the county clerks. And it's plural here in our case with four counties. So, we file that information with them. And the county clerks actually determine what the levy is for bond and interest payments. So, they take a look at, "What's the total amount that we have to repay in a year?" And they add that on to the levy. You see that, you approve that during the levy process, but the county clerks really look at that and make sure that they extend the right amount, so that we are able to collect the appropriate levy and then repay our bondholders. There are the folks who lent us money to us. So, this is separate from the operating levy. We really don't have the ability to independently extend a bond and interest levy. If there are no bond repayments that exist, the county clerks will not extend anything on our behalf. So, it's not like we could just use that money as our debt is paid off for some other purpose. If there's no bond repayments, there's no levy that's extended for us and we don't receive those funds. So, just taking a look at what we have, we have two outstanding bond series at the moment. Over the next several years, we'll be paying them off. So, you can see here in the rightmost column, the amounts. The taxes due, this first row, taxes due in 2019. So, you're currently paying for this $11.2 million referendum debt repayment. Now, this excludes the DCEB debt, which is about an additional $2.1 million. And then next year in 2019, 2019 levy, taxes due paid in 2020. It'll be 8.9, following about 1.6 the year after. And then taxes due in 2022, absent any additional debt the district takes on, there will be no bond and interest levy for referendum debt in that year. So, this next slide talks about really the impact of the referendum with this timing. So, the referendum is in March, but the deadline to impact the 2019 levy actually happens at the end of February in 2020. So, if there was new debt that was in place prior to the end of February 2020, we could still impact what the county clerks extend for the 2019 levy. But because the earliest we would realistically be able to issue debt after a successful referendum would be a few months, that's well past the deadline. So, the referendum will not, timing-wise, allow us to affect the 2019 levy for taxes collected in 2020. So, that means that that 8.9 million will in fact be what's extended by the county clerks. So, there will be a decline in the taxes paid here in the Barrington 220 district by about $134 for a $500,000 home. So, the referendum will not affect that. So, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Bob and let him talk through a little more of the detail around some of the financing related to the referendum.
Thank you, Dave. So, this first slide, you've probably seen this many times, versions of this. This is the detail that we provide in our presentations. And the column there called total referendum debt service, we've highlighted levy year 18 in yellow to represent the current year that you're collecting taxes to pay those bond payments. So, you can see 11.2 million. That mimics the summary that Dave had pulled out on the prior couple of slides. And what, the other thing I'll point out on this is the relative consistency of your debt payment over a decade. That's very rare for Illinois schools to have a consistent debt payment. Most of the time, it's increasing from year to year, because a lot of times, those finances will put together, assuming EAV was going to increase. So, that's something that you already have as a positive for your district, is you've maintained that payment over a long period of time. Next slide, the annual debt service. So, that $11.2 million levy for taxes collected in 2019 translates to about $602 on a $500,000 home. As Dave mentioned, that's going to decrease to 8.9 million in levy year 19 for taxes collected in 2020, which is about a $134 decline in the bill. And as Dave mentioned, that there's really nothing you can do to prevent that, even if you decide to go to referendum. So, we've had clients in that situation before, where you really want to, you may want to have as your plan that we want to maintain the levy, but unfortunately, at the time you're discussing with the public about the referendum question, the bill that they just paid was at the $11.2 million levy. And your levy's going down, so you have that context. You've got to be very careful on how you talk to the public, that they know whether you're talking about the bills that they paid last year or you're talking about the bills that you projected to pay this summer. And you'll see that, how it plays out through the rest of this presentation.
Just so I understand this correctly, are we saying that it's $602 for the debt that we have in 2019? That's not the reduction?
The referendum debt.
Of course. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right. Yes, for $500,000 home. Yep.
Can I ask a question? There's an asterisk, reflects homeowner's exemption.
Because we've included in that calculation, the standard homeowner's exemption. For the Calhoun County is at $6,000. It's different in Cook County, just because...
Most of us have a homeowner's exemption.
Yeah. All homeowner's exemption, all homeowners have that exemption. Now, there's other exemptions that homeowners can qualify for. We haven't included those, because you have to either be a senior or a veteran or a disabled veteran or some other category that qualifies for exemption.
In spring, that's where there was some discussion about what the actual impact was. And this is, it depended on whether or not we were including this exemption or not.
We can't calculate what the payment is for every taxpayer scenario. So, we used a fairly typical and generic taxpayer scenario, which is the taxpayer qualifies for the homeowner's exemption.
So let's look at the potential referendum scenarios. Nothing here tonight is necessarily meant to be a recommendation by PMA or even administration. We're just trying to give you some illustrations. The available proceeds will depend upon a variety of factors. The annual debt service target amount, interest rates, and timing phasing the bond issues. Now, if I can talk about that first one, that's like when you determine you're going to buy your home for a certain, or maybe you want to upsize your home, and you say, you know what, I can afford about a $1,500 a month mortgage payment. Well, if interest rates go up, the principal you can pay each month goes down, which means you have to look for a smaller house. And the converse, of course, is true. If interest rates go down, you can look for a bigger house. Same thing with your bond referendum. If you target, we don't want the annual payment to be above X, those interest rates fluctuate, the amount of bond proceeds you can get over the period of time loss will fluctuate. The timing phasing the bond issues is important because the school code allows you to go out 20 years on a bond financing. And if you were to pass a referendum and sell all the bonds at once, well, you're limited to 20 years to pay back what was asked of the voters. If you phase the bond issues over a two, three, or up to five-year period, you have up to five years that you sell the bonds, well, then you can structure those because the bond in year one can go out 20 years, the bond in year two can go out 20 years. So you may end up with like a 22, 23-year payback by phasing those bond issues and try to do sort of just-in-time financing. Because if you're doing a lot of projects, you don't need all the money at one time. Because now you're trying to manage your interest flow, the amount that you're paying on the bonds versus what you're earning on those proceeds, balancing it against interest rate risk, you also have IRS rules that come into play. You have to have a reasonable expectation, spend 85% of the proceeds in three years.
And we've assumed three tranches, so we'd issue over three years to try and time it with expenditures that we would incur. So that's been consistent in the way that we've modeled this over the last 18 months.
So the next slide gives you some data here as it relates to the market. I could talk on this slide a long time, but I won't. Just to point out, the area in the background, the gray looks, provides you the Fed funds rate. And then the.
Or 10, depending on which monitor you look at.
Oh, yeah.
If you look up here, it looks quite.
Oh, yeah, it is. You're right.
It's quite 10.
And then the four lines represent four points on the MMD municipal bond index that's put out on a daily basis. Because when we talk about interest rates, there's not just one interest rate. There's a yield curve of interest rates depending on the term of your bond issue. So we've graphed there the one, the five, the 10, and the 20. So this chart shows you a few different things. One, it gives you an idea where we're at, where we're at sort of an absolute basis and a historical level. So if you look at those lines at the far right, we're fairly low going back to 2003, which is right after the onset of two recessions ago, which of course followed the terrorist attacks. And we also look at this, how interest rates are reflected on the overall yield curve. Do we have flat yield curve? Do we have steep yield curve? As you can see, yields have compressed here of late, so we have a flat yield curve right now. And the other thing I'd like to point out here is sort of misconception that occurs when you're having conversations about the direction of interest rates. You know, people are always worried about the Fed's going to do, and we should be concerned about what the Fed's going to do. But the Fed doesn't have control over the entire yield curve. So for example, look at the seven-year period where the Fed funds rate was constant, and you see that the one-year municipal rates with the correlation with that was fairly close to one to one. But over that same period of time, you look at the five to 10, and the 20-year, there's a lot of variation, those interest rates, while Fed policy remained constant. So the takeaway from that is while Fed policy is important, it cannot be ignored, it has a much greater influence on shorter rates, maybe medium to short rates, but you get out the medium and long-term rates, there's less control in the market, or of the Fed. So, do we go backwards? No? We moved on.
Oh.
So, okay.
It may just be assembled in there slightly.
Oh, okay, gotcha. So referendum proceeds. If you target to maintain the levy at levy year 18, which is on 0.2 million, and we assume a successful March 20 referendum, you could generate proceeds of $173 million. Now, that number is higher than what we had estimated with the last referendum attempt, that if you had maintained the levy, which ultimately wasn't the question you asked the voters, but you may recall from presentations what you could have done without an increase. And the reason for that is some of those variables I just talked about. Interest rates have improved dramatically. So as interest rates have come down, you can get more proceeds out of that same constraint, self-imposed constraint. And then the also, the other reason is that the delay of one year eliminates an additional year of debt service that was still outstanding. Because if you recall, you'd have a couple of payments left. Well, if you had passed, you would have been able to issue bonds when you had three years of payments left. And now you're going into a period of time where you have one year left, so you have one more year at the end that you can fill up, if you look at the 20-year constraint in the financing. So as we mentioned earlier, the approximate impact on the property tax bill is, you know, $500,000.
A 602 for a $500,000 home.
I'm sorry.
Yep.
What did I say?
It is, yeah. It's late, it's been a long day.
Just so I understand, this levy, based on the bonds that we have outstanding, will go down at the end of February.
Right.
So that will go down before a successful passage of a referendum, if we were decided to go in March.
That's correct. What, what we're trying to do is, and we're going to show two other scenarios here, but we wanted to show you since the past referendum conversation was talking about a flat levy compared, you know, using this $11.2 million, we wanted to show you, what does that look like if you were to say, well, what if we still had a, an annual debt service payment of $11.2 million? Well, that would yield about $173 million. And, you know, this slide shows you sort of how those, how those payments, you know, play out.
Yes, so it's really, it's kind of in between the last bill and when the next bill will come out. So you really got to be careful how you discuss those with the talking point.
Yes, this was, this was, this was the last referendum, where it actually was at $185 million, so there was an increase over the 11.2. This is what it would look like at $173 million, which is flat at the 11.2 million. But there still is that drop that happens during this next year because of the timing of the referendum and the issuance of debt.
Yeah, I think that graph really.
Yep.
That really illustrates what you were just asking about, Gavin, was the drop that you have, and then it would come back up.
Yes, yep.
And then.
And then this just shows in the green, the 11.2 being a consistent payment over time.
And you can, you can also see the phasing here. We have the three different bond series, which essentially gives you a 22-year payback. It's consistent, that hasn't changed. That's the same thing we had in the prior referendum. So then, what if you wanted to instead have the levy stay flat with what taxpayers will actually pay next year? Even though they won't have those bills when they vote on it, if you're going to be consistent with the 8.9 million, then obviously the amount of proceeds you can obtain with the levy going down declines to $136 million, which would be a $468 impact on a $500,000 home, which would be roughly a $134 decline from the prior year. This is what, the detail is, the next slide is a graph. You can see how it drops down to maintain it at what the levy would be for levy year 20. So it really is important, then, this illustrates why the talking points have to be communicated transparently to them.
We then did a third scenario for you that, that was, what would it look like if we were going to do what had been the, in the last referendum, sort of the flat scenario? We talked about $160 million. So we said, let's run a $160 million scenario for you so that you could see what that looked like.
And that would create an annual levy about $10.3 million, which is about a $558 payment on a $500,000 home, which is a slight dip from levy year 18, the bills being paid this year of $44. And, yes, the graph. So this really is transparent here. It shows you what the payment was in levy year 18. Shows you that the payment would go down to $468, and it comes back up to $558 if you approved a $160 million referendum, which is less than it was at your peak year in levy year 18 for bills paid this calendar year. So this type of information is important, then, as you try to communicate to the taxpayers what's happening with their bills. So there's really nothing you can do to prevent the decrease that's going to happen in levy year 19 for bills paid in 20, just because of the whole timing.
So we thought that, that this would provide you a little bit of the background about our current debt situation, the process for issuance and repayment of referendum debt. And we gave you three scenarios. Again, as, as Bob said, it's not a recommendation from PMA or, or from me about a particular debt level. It was simply giving you three scenarios that I thought would be consistent with some of the conversations that you've had in the past, to give you a starting point. And certainly, we can run other scenarios based on board direction as we go forward. I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have remaining.
Let me go on a couple of years on the issuance, because we're not, we don't need the funds upfront. Is our interest rate locked on that portion? Are we floating until we actually issue those proceeds?
Yeah, you're not locked in until they're sold.
So the, and the only reason why I ask it is the analysis assumes that we're a flat interest rate, which is, we just have to be careful from that discussion perspective.
Depending on when you actually issue them.
So if anything, it might make sense to kind of maybe sensitize, I mean, I don't know. I mean, how do other school districts look at it?
Yeah, I have, I have one client that wanted, ran on market rates, and they ran into a problem because they passed a referendum just in the same night as the presidential election. And the market rates went up, so it looked like they were going to have difficulty meeting what they told the voters. And then they got sued, and there was a delay, and six months later, rates had come down below the election. So actually ended up lower than we told the voters, but, so they actually fortunate for the lawsuit, ironically. Others will have me add a 50, 75 basis point cushion. The problem you have with that, though, if you're, if you're being too conservative, is if you've targeted an amount, like, let's say you say you want to maintain the levy at what it was, and we're too conservative, and then you pass your referendum, you may have left off some things you might have wanted to do. You know, so you end up below the target. Conversely, if we're not conservative enough and rates go up, you may not be able to do everything maybe to the scope that you just said you were going to do in the referendum question. So it's a, sort of a balancing act on the, the risk you're willing to take. You know, the other thing you have going for you is, since we're only phasing it for those two years, you could always, you may have to delay some of the projects or slow them down a bit, but if you can go out one more year, while you're maintaining the, the impact of the taxpayer, you would have one additional year at the end that they would be paying back.
So we, and we've modeled things differently here. I've worked with Bob to actually model second, third year increased rates. The board also had some discussions and said, nope, let's go with flat interest rates, and that's what we've modeled since then. But you're right, that is, that is a risk, and it's costly to try and lock in that.
Is there a list when you can't lock in if we chose to or no?
You can do forward delivery type contracts or swap hedges, but, you know, they, they bake in an assumption for an increased interest rate. So while you might hedge it, you still, you're paying more proceeds. And then those, those types of instruments come with a whole host of different risks that you would have to, you know, we have to discuss before using something like that.
Do you stagger the amount of your issuance based on your forecast of rates over the two, three years?
Provided it meets our cash flow needs, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, you could, I'm not sure if this is what you're asking, but I'll say anyhow, you can use obviously a different assumption for each one of those series, too. You don't have to use a consistent assumption. So you, you don't have to be as conservative on the first couple of tranches, maybe you want to be a little conservative on the third tranche in that analysis.
If you think rates are really low, your first tranche.
You could issue more debt.
That's, that's.
Yeah, you definitely could issue more debt.
Less than later.
And the other thing that we try to do when we structure these bonds, we just implemented this with Hinsdale, we just sold their bonds today, actually. They got eight or nine bids, we did 20-year financing, their all-in rate was at 2.96 on a 20-year financing. And we back-end loaded the principal, too. It would be, so normally a 20-year financing might have like a 12-year average life, that's the point which you paid off 50% of the principal. We back-end loaded, it had about a 14, 14 and a half year average life. So we lock in the longer principal first, so when we sell the second and third tranches there, we're selling shorter principal, which has less risk associated with it. Plus, if you, if you think the economy is going to a slowdown, the yield curve is going to steepen, is, you're better off selling, another reason to sell those shorter payments later, because you might have a steeper yield curve you're selling into. So those are type of strategies you can implement that we haven't fully implemented into your plan yet.
So.
We've got a lot of work to do.
We do. And I think that, from what I'm hearing, if I could just maybe summarize, once we get an idea of what we're thinking of doing, we would come back to you and you would model that for us.
We could model different scenarios based on a number. That's correct.
So, thank you very much. We've got a lot to think about. You explained it very well. I guess we'll get back to you.
Yeah. One of the things we can do as well is, if we're going to model the current market rates, I can compute some sort of sensitivity analysis that comes with that. For every 10 basis points, you lose X amount of proceeds, or the payment impact goes up by this. I can provide both those statistics to provide some additional context. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. It's already 9:30.
All right, let's do it in a half hour.
Yeah, okay, well, okay, I will just start. At our last board meeting, the board agreed, the goal is to place a referendum on the March 17 ballot. We want to prepare and vote on a question before our first back-to-school night, which is on August 27. We don't want to reinvent the wheel, rather make a decision using information we already have, thus the sheet's in front of us. For homework, I asked Dr. Harris to send us the list of capital projects, which is on the giant sheet in front of us. And I asked everyone to come up with two or three items, look through things that are, they must have, and then some that you'd be willing to eliminate. And the hope was also to refresh our minds about what was here. So walk through the documents at our table. I thought this would be helpful for those, you know, for Barry and Leah, a little bit for you to look at later. So the first one is dated May 3. This is the document that we used before we condensed, started condensing columns. So the next document is, was the document given to the referendum advisory committee initially. The third document with the fourth column, the 185, was a change requested by the referendum advisory committee. And then the last document is the document that the board worked off, and there is a difference between the third document and the fourth. The one that the board worked off was to formulate the referendum. So if you would like to compare our discussion tonight with what was actually on the ballot last time, you want to reference this 185 column in the last document. Okay? So. I thought we would, I have, I asked Dr. Harris to have supporting cast for us in helping to keep track of items and what they might be costing us. But my suggestion would be that we start working through things, and it's on or off, and we, majority rules, and we start, oh, we start building a list, and then I'm going to ask someone that, when we hit 100 million, let us know. When we hit 120, let us know. But my suggestion would be, because I'm not asking tonight what our numbers should be at this time, that we, that we work up to 160, 170, 185, and then, then we can see what we will, what we're going to have to take off, if we need to take off.
Do you want to hear what our get rid ofs and keeps are first?
Yes. Well, yeah, but, but we're going to do that, that's how we're going to build our list.
And honey, we could just ask several of us that are really going to try and capture this, board members, as you're going through saying in or out, if you could, if you, looking at the one that's got sort of the, the different levels, just give us an idea where this is, is it elementary, is it middle school? We're looking at the descriptions and we'll, we'll capture.
It would be helpful to indicate the column that it is in, as well as the level. Does that make sense?
Middle, high, elementary.
Yep, yes. All right.
What about things that may not be on any of these?
We'll get to that.
For example, I just have an example, like the best 220, are we, maybe we need to talk about building a, I'm just saying, you know.
We'll get, we'll get to it. It's on my list.
Okay, okay.
I got you.
Okay.
Yeah, I've got other things.
Okay.
That, okay.
Okay, so let's start with, how about if we just go down the table? With the things that have to stay on.
So we're going off the draft 5318.
Correct. Leah, do you want to start?
Sure.
These are things that have to stay on.
Have to stay on. So, safety and security upgrades, first column.
All three levels?
Yes.
Did you have a second item?
Yes, the level one, maintenance and repairs in the same first column.
Let's keep, what we keep.
Okay. So that's what I would keep.
Right. Gavin?
Those are the only two that I have.
Angela?
Uh, yeah, I'd keep all those, and then my other keeps are all of the mobiles.
And.
Otherwise. Mobiles.
So, so let me interpret for you, because you mentioned this before, that you considered eliminating the mobiles and the associated additions to the middle schools as part of safety and security, correct?
Correct, and I, I want to put a caveat on that. I do not have the elimination of the Grove mobiles as part of my. I do not have the elimination of the Grove mobiles as part of my must-keep. So I am looking at middle school mobiles.
So that's everything in that box, everything in the box.
Those two boxes, correct.
So that's in the 200 million column. You guys tracking okay?
My assumption is that you were going through everybody to get them and then you're going to come back and say, where do we all agree? Is that not the case?
Not, no. I just want you to start capturing these things now.
So Leah and myself were level one and safety and security. Angela, I believe was level one, safety and security plus mobiles at the middle school.
Correct.
I mean, if we're doing three, I can agree with Angela.
Everything in the box.
So I mean.
Do three. Everything in the box.
So, yeah, so, you know.
Two or three.
Whatever you want.
I just remember you saying that you considered that safety and security and that that should have been in.
Right. That's why I gave you the. Okay, Mike?
I agree.
There's nothing that I don't think should be in there. So there's my simple answer.
Barry?
So I'm telling you what I want for sure. Okay. I'd like an 800-seat fine arts center and I'd like the PE wellness addition.
Where is the PE wellness addition?
It's in, it's under the 150. It's under the box.
High school level?
The high school level. I'm sorry. High school level.
Okay.
Right. Both of these are high school level.
Okay.
Fine arts and the PE wellness.
Okay, now let's.
I believe though, for that, don't you have to have the other buckets or no?
Some of the site work has to be part of that, some of it.
So I'm getting, we'll get there.
Yeah, there's some additional.
Okay, let's, let's go back. Let's work the same way. Things that you would get rid of. We'll go back the other way.
I have to find it in here. The, what I want to get rid of is this, I, I think the sensory therapy room in, at the elementary school, that I can't, I can find it on the second page at 158, but I don't see it.
It's in the bottom of the 250 column?
Oh, okay, 250. Okay, there. I didn't see it.
Okay, for getting, for the things to get rid of, I'm just going to keep a list.
Okay.
Okay? Unless, does someone have the capability of keeping a list of these things independent of the other list?
We have, we have two different people that are, are keeping track, but we have to clarify on what Barry had to say.
But my question is, is, does someone have the capability of keeping a separate column of things that we would not include?
Just keep a list.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so Barry said the sensory rooms. Mike? Or wait, you got a second item?
I do?
Sorry. Yep.
Oh, lucky. I also, I think I would not do the kindergarten classrooms either.
Under the same dollar amount?
Yeah, getting rid of those two.
Mike?
So to clarify, I'm going with the 160 column because that's what we put on the last.
We're working off of this sheet though. Would you mind?
You're going back for a year from where we ended up?
Yes. We're working, but we're working off the.
I'm, I'm going off the most recent column that we put on the referendum when I decide on what should be left in or taken out.
Okay.
Because for me, it's too complicated to go back a year and start looking. We, I already put a lot of time, and we all did, and worked into getting to this, what we put on the last referendum. And we cut out a lot to get there. So I think that's the most logical, for me, that's what I was looking at.
So what are you suggesting?
I'm not taking, I don't suggest we take anything out. And I suggest that, in my opinion, everything in there should be in there.
So in the 160 column?
In the most recent, yeah.
That's how you put a lot of work into this?
It took us two years to get there.
All right. Okay, well, for the sake of expedience, does everyone agree with Mike?
No.
No. Okay. Does everyone agree with Mike?
I took out the sensor, I mean, personally, I took out the sensory. I think we could spend the 6,000 better elsewhere if we choose to do that.
Okay. So what would I take out? Personally, I would take out the fine arts center. And I would take out the furniture at all three levels. Angela?
Can you repeat that?
Say again.
Fine arts and furniture.
Fine art center and furniture at all three levels.
I'd take out the furniture at all three levels. I would take out the turfing, the two fields that falls under the 200 million. I would take out the proposed site work at the elementary schools that falls under the 200 million.
Wait, wait, wait. You got to catch up. Hold on. So, okay, so just for clarification, you would take out everything in that, everything in that elementary box there?
I think it confused the heck out of people.
Sorry, where are you? I'm not sure where you are.
200 million?
Okay, you're in the parking lot.
Parking, okay.
Bottom box, the whole box.
Whole box.
Okay.
I'd take it all out. I think it, it confused and frustrated people.
So Angela, wait, I have you as the fine art center, furniture. You said something about a field.
The, the two fields, the turfs.
In the 200 column.
The 200 million. Now, Penny, I didn't say the fine art center.
Well, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry.
No, but it's okay because that's the one that I sit here and go, this is the one that I struggle with and I don't, I don't think we need to have a long discussion over it, but I do think that that's the one issue where we as a board feel very passionate about it and we've gotten a lot of very opposite feedback. So I could be, I honestly could be so easily swayed either way. So that's, that's where I, that's my if you want.
Okay. And you, is someone?
So you have that in on one side and then out on the other. How would you like us to treat that?
Two separate lists, right?
Sure.
You've got going?
Yep.
Both lists?
Yep.
And you know what's funny, Dave, is that I actually listed it as my top priority and then I listed it as taken out too. So it actually is very representative of my personal ideas.
Okay. Gavin?
I, I put furniture and fixtures at all levels. I would also eliminate the, the mobiles at Grove, which would also eliminate the four additional classrooms.
Which column was it in? I'm sorry, I'm trying, oh, I see.
250, I think.
So it was at the 250 million dollar level for the elimination of the four classrooms? And was there something else with?
No, don't look, keep the mobiles. Keep the mobiles.
Gavin, you mean keep the mobiles.
Yes, keep them.
So you don't have to build the classroom.
It's not an item that's on here.
Yes, keep the mobiles.
So you don't have to build the classroom? Okay, just to make sure, you want to take those off of our list? That we would include, the mobiles at Grove?
Yes.
I just want to make sure we're on the same page. Leah?
So furniture, furniture at every level I would take off. And I didn't break it up, that was in the 80 million or the, yeah, what was it?
Yeah, I got it.
You know where it is. All right.
It's in the 150.
And then I was looking at, similar to Angela, the lines, parking and entrance and exit and all of that, I think was confusing and a problem as well. So I hadn't thought of taking all of it off, just taking lines off, but I would like.
So there was the lines added parking and new entrance exit? Is that correct?
Um, that would be, Sandra had sent us her thoughts as well and that would be consistent with Sandra's thoughts too.
Do you want me to read hers?
Just lines or all of it?
Um, just line.
Just lines. Okay.
Sure.
I'll just read, Sandra sent Penny and I an email, so I'll just read hers. She said the items to keep would be the safety, all of the 80 million, safety and security and, and update, getting rid of the mobiles at the middle school level and adding elementary classrooms. So she wanted to keep those things. Okay? She felt it was important. She, the things that she believes should go would be the fine art center, the furniture at all levels, and then the lines, station, campus traffic solution. Okay? That was Sandra.
Yes. Okay, so I think we've all given our, our homework. What I'd like to do is, can we agree that we are going to, we will not visit anything in the 330 million dollar column this evening?
Yes.
What I'd like to do is just go line by line through the items, starting in the 150 column because it seems like we all agree with everything in the 80 column. And we're going to do thumbs up, thumbs down. Majority, majority adds it to the list. Okay? And what I'm going to do though is I'm going to leave even the things that some of us expressed interest in taking off on there so we can get the sense of everybody. Because there, there are some things that I think we have the majority on, but I'm not sure, but I just want to make sure that we're representing everybody's thoughts. Okay? So furnitures, fixtures and equipment at all levels. Okay, it's majority. Off. Fine art center. Okay. Got a vote?
I'm going to, all right, I'm going to do this.
Okay, it's on, please?
Angela, I mean, Sandra wasn't on that.
But we have four to three, so.
Yeah, I got it. Okay.
The front entry and atrium addition and student service renovation. Does everybody know what this is? Okay. Okay, on the list, please. The PE and wellness addition.
Where is that now?
It is in the 150 column. It's right here.
High school?
Yep.
High school.
Have a seat.
Probably over here now because it's on this one.
Okay, PE support expansion.
I'm sorry, the PE and wellness addition was thumbs up?
Yeah. Yes.
The 10-5.
The PE support expansion.
Can you just say what that is quick? Sorry.
Yeah, that was, that was like a fitness area that was on the back of the building.
And that's different than the wellness center?
Yes.
I was going to put the two of them together and make one a little smaller, but that's.
We did not include that previously.
Didn't.
That wasn't in the 185.
It was not in the 185.
Wait, what's, what wasn't?
Okay.
The support?
The PE support expansion.
Oh, then I changed my vote.
Okay, then I'm going to go down.
Okay.
And I mean, right now we're.
About 120 million, just so that you've got an idea about where we are as we go.
Is that a thumbs down? So the PE support is a thumbs down.
Yeah, that was a thumbs down.
Okay.
I think I know that one. Actually, I mean, we're doing something at the high school this summer.
We are.
It's not this.
We're not doing hard construction, but we're securing.
So that's, that's not included. The athletic entry addition.
Oh, I see on, I see on the far side. I got you.
Okay. Okay, we have some site work. And let's just say this about the site work to Gavin's point. My goal at the end of tonight is to have a list that Brian can take back to DLR and Pepper and make sure, I'm sorry?
Should we even worry about the site work?
Well, there's a few things that I think there are some choices.
If you do all of those, everything outside of the facility on the campus, you got to do the site work because it's draining and.
No, but I think, I think we can vote on what's below the site work.
Yeah, it's correct.
And then we can determine what the actual.
Then the site work number will change depending on what you want to include there.
Yeah, like we don't need to vote on stormwater.
Well, we're, that's gonna, we're going to get some of that anyway. Right. So, but I just wanted you to know that they would follow up and make sure that we had allowed for, accounted for everything we would.
Go into the actual field stuff and then we'll come up with the number after that.
So.
Okay?
Add a lacrosse parking, lacrosse field parking.
Remember that was on the west side of Hart Road.
I'm just looking at, did it make it in the 185 million?
It did.
It did, yes.
I think it was in 160 actually.
Yeah, it's not under 185.
It's under 160.
160. Although I don't see it.
No, it's not under 160.
I don't see it.
Oh, maybe it didn't make it.
Uh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It was in.
It was in there.
It was in there.
I don't see it, babe.
They're calling it student event parking, because it's the same number, 499.
Yeah.
So instead of calling it lacrosse field parking, they're calling it student, student event parking. I mean, that's the same number, 499.
And you know why? Because it wasn't just for lacrosse.
You got it. Okay.
Okay, I'm a yes on that. Everybody else?
Doesn't matter. We got enough.
Relocate the baseball field.
Good. This is stuff on the west side of Hart Road.
So the baseball field, the baseball field parking would, would.
They're together. That's the north end of the property on the west side of the road.
So basically, the baseball field, the parking, the bridges are all on the other side of Hart Road. So.
Why are we relocating the baseball field?
Because we're reorganizing that whole.
I do actually adding a sophomore baseball field is what we're doing. They said they don't have a field.
The sophomore baseball field right now is going to be moved.
It's either you got to do this stuff or not.
Because of the site work that we're going to do at the high school to help with the traffic. If you remember the, the overhead of the high school. Okay, everybody, baseball, baseball field parking and bridges for Hart Road? Yes? Yes. Okay. Got all those, the three items? Thank you. Convert the practice field to turf. This is outside the high school. It's not on the other side of Hart Road. But I'm aware, right?
Just north of the gymnasium.
This is the field spaces on the current property.
Just north of the gymnasium, adjacent to the stadium.
Yep.
This is something that was included in the 185.
Turfing the, they're current grass. They're grass right now. And some dirt, baseball diamonds.
It was in our last, it was in the referendum, so I'm for it.
So that does not make it on the list. Replace and relocate the tennis courts. This, this was in the 160, was it?
That has to do with if we're going to change the parking or the drive, we have to move the tennis court.
See, all of these kind of go together.
Yeah, yeah, you can't just pick one out.
Because they're all contingent upon one another, if you remember this.
Well, the turf.
The turf wasn't.
The turf was the only thing you could pull.
The rest of the stuff is all contingent on each other.
Did turf make it in?
Tennis?
Yes.
I need a thumbs up or down on the tennis courts, guys?
Yes.
Okay. Tennis courts are in. Add sight lighting south. I believe this is lighting the field on the other side of In, please. Renovate parking lot in front of the building. In, please.
Well, now I don't have to turn illegally left out of there when I go.
You won't have to anymore. I do it every time, 10 o'clock at night.
And ironically, one of the smallest dollar amounts on the page, improve traffic circulation at the high school. Thank you. That's on the list. If we're going to do all this, we have to maintain, we have to do the maintenance and grounds building demo. Okay, Angela's still got her hand up. Relocate the loading dock and those two items also are part of the package.
What number are we at now? Do you know?
132 million dollars up through relocate loading dock access, not including loading dock access road.
But we want to include.
I was waiting until you got there.
We're there.
We're there.
Great, now it's 133.
Okay. Skipping down to the bottom of that column with the elementary school kitchen renovations. Oh.
Elementary kitchens.
Okay, sorry.
There's nothing for the middle school there then?
Got it. Kitchen renovations. So, the one thing that I had written on my sheet is, you know, if we're gonna... With all this new food service stuff that we have coming in, I do kind of think like, oh gosh, is this like... I don't wanna get totally tied to a plan on this, because I feel like we might have options to kind of increase food quality at the elementary schools, and maybe we'll talk about like, other things with, you know, the elementary schools if it looks...
So are you thinking if we were to step away from the lunch program at the elementary?
I just wanna keep it like a little loose.
Well, for eight schools...
I know, it's real hard to do.
The money, I don't, I'm just telling you, the money, I don't think...
Can't afford it.
And honestly?
At that level.
I mean, this is like 450,000 a school.
I know, it was like so little, that's why I was kinda like, oh gosh, do we do this? And then later we think...
Need to do it.
Okay, we just need to do it, okay, then, here we go.
Okay.
See how easily persuaded I am at 10 o'clock at night?
I tried to make it earlier.
I know.
Drafting the Constitution.
In that case, no.
Okay, can I, to simplify things, I'm gonna ask everyone to independently look at the 200 million column and tell me if, if there is anything they would like to include. Other than the station, everything pertaining to the mobiles at Station and Prairie, those are already in.
Those are all in.
You have them in already, right?
So really, it's the high school bucket and the elementary bucket.
Wait, let's be sure he's got it.
But how about site work at Station and Prairie? Does that include, I mean, is that included as part of the, or not?
Wait, wait, timeout. They have to catch up, sorry.
So, so, got mobile station, mobile classroom demo, and 10 classroom addition. The resource room addition is that?
Everything in the box there, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't have the, the box, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So.
The resource room addition?
Yep.
The hallway addition?
Yep.
The classroom renovation?
Yep.
Then the Prairie mobile classroom demo?
Yep.
Nine classroom addition?
Yes.
And the hallway renovation?
Yes.
And to Barry's question, yes, I believe every, all that site work also needs to be done.
It has to, because that's increasing our footprint on that site, so we've gotta allow for some more.
So do you want me to? Okay.
We're 151 is where we are right now.
Shall we revisit that bottom box for the elementary schools? The countryside additional parking and sec... Let me just say to, to Barry and Leah too. These items were things that, I'm not trying to minimize their importance, but they were things that we heard from the community, gosh, we would really like to have better parking situation and traffic circulation in our schools. And they, they were put on the list. And I think that we can all agree, at all of our schools, we would like these things. But we don't know if we can do any of these, truthfully. Because there are so many outside IDA, the villages, that have say-so on this. And, you know, as we heard at our last board meeting in the public comment, she was from, the woman from Fox Point was saying that this was pretty disruptive to their, um, community, and they were really concerned about specifically the one at lines. So, um, just try to update to give everyone a good picture. So, countryside, parking, and second entrance.
I mean, I think that for, again, optics, you know, I drove by countryside the other day. I agree, that parking there is a disaster, and the ingress and egress is a disaster, but the entire parking lot's ripped up right now. And I think that when people see that, and they're like, wait, what? We're gonna do, redo, you know, like, I think it kinda gives like a mixed message for a lot of these.
Well, I think a lot of this wasn't necessarily new blacktop, it was the curb cuts and the engineering and all that stuff.
Absolutely, absolutely. But it's just, you know...
It was going east.
I, I guess I...
Talk Brinker.
Gone to Brinker.
So, I will say right now, I think Angela would like to get rid of the whole box.
Yeah.
Gavin, were you in that camp too?
Yep.
I'm pretty much there. Does anyone else agree with just eliminating this at this time?
My only concern is, that doesn't leave very many things for the elementaries on our, on our referendum. If we take away the parking, um, there's the sensory rooms, there's, we've, we've given money for...
Potentially.
Potentially, there's potentially, but there's, I know, we're not there. So, so I'm not, I guess I'm not sure.
What's in it for us? We're gonna vote for this, it's all high school. And again, I think the high school needs it, but we also have to make sure that we're feeling like, you know, we have to feel it, we mean the needs of the elementary school people also.
I will...
We talk about equality all the time, equitable, and it's just, our schools are not equitable, they're all different.
Agreed.
And I think, I think historically, and I can speak for myself, we were very focused on it needs to be at each level, and I think in reality, there's just not funds to take care of each level with the, the needs that are necessary.
I mean, I think the other thing is that our, you know, with the exception of the ELC, our four newest schools are elementary schools, and so they might not need as much. But still, when you look at the, you know, $38 million that was going to, you know, bring those buildings up to, up to speed, I think, I mean, I'll digress. I think that if, when we start explaining this again, we need to explain more about Level 1, because I think that it just got lost. So, I think that that might help, um, explain. The other thing is, the, in the parking lots, I mean, four of the eight schools possibly were getting something, so it isn't something that was really for everyone.
But they don't all need, they don't all have the same need either, so.
So, I'm gonna go one by one then. Countryside parking. That's off. It's in the no column, please. Grove expanded parking lot. Okay. Heinz parking lot and entrance.
They're all no's.
And then the North Barrington.
Before we move off parking lots, I just wanna mention, Sunny Hill was kinda baked into this a little bit, because we said that while it wasn't on the actual sheet, we did talk about it as a group, that it may come out of summer projects.
Right.
Because we wouldn't need that money for other projects at the time, but Sunny Hills parking lot was also part of the discussion. So I just feel like in fairness, we should probably talk about that for a second too, and consider it tonight as we're looking at the other elementary schools.
Sunny Hill, I mean...
It wasn't a enter/exit permission thing, it was expanding the existing parking lot in the green space to try to get more traffic off of that road.
We had, we had said that we would try to do it as a future summer project.
If the referendum passed.
Oh, okay.
It was a large issue for that community, that came up several times, I just wanna make sure that we talk about it as a group too.
Is there...
Where would it be again, how did it work?
It wasn't on this list of schools, but it was discussed as a possible that that parking lot could be addressed after the fact out of summer projects, because we wouldn't need to be using that money for other projects.
What's Craig saying is, if you're not gonna do these four, not gonna include them, so just agree that you probably wouldn't include the Sunny Hill project too.
Exactly, I just don't wanna not have that discussed or voted on.
Yeah, because that's the first question we're gonna get from that community, so.
But is it still in the summer project, future summer project box?
We were only gonna do it if the referendum passed.
I would say that...
Then it's not.
There's a lot of things that could be future summer projects, right now, we just don't know what they are.
I'd say all these look like summer projects to me.
Well, yeah.
Some of them are more doable than others.
But you're right, I mean, there might be...
Some of them are more doable than others.
These villages, towns to do.
All of them.
Even Sunny Hills.
Yes.
Sunny Hills would need approval too, to make the, to make the parking, to make the parking bigger inside the property.
There was a curb cut involved there.
Okay.
Yes, all of them.
Okay, so all of them would need a village, and more than, how many municipalities would they each need?
Sunny Hills just green space.
Yeah, but that, yeah, which involves some...
There was a curb cut too.
Nifty's permitting, and, and, because there's water flow issues, and it's actually paved over green, green space. But there's a curb cut, then it gets even more involved.
There was a curb cut to the east.
Okay.
I believe.
Just to clarify, all of these things in the box, including Sunny Hill, we need other groups' permission to do it, and it's not for sure we would get the permission.
That is correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Gotta get city and village ordinance.
Well, you know, depending on the school, right? North Barrington, we may need, we were talking about an exit on Miller, that could be North Barrington, it could also be Lake County. Could also maybe be IDOT. Same thing with Lake Cook Road.
Okay.
You know?
And it's just as far as equity, that they all are something out of our control in this box, that was, that were...
They were all kinda tentative anyway, to some degree, based on village approvals.
So that's, as far as talking to people and explaining, that's the complication, that, yeah.
Well, it's not a no.
It's not a no.
If it's a need, in my opinion?
Mm-hmm.
It's not a reason not to do it, and we would try. So, is it a need that we can include? That's the question. And, you know, I'm sorry, but since we're on this topic, he brought up the middle school site work. We have the new house on Prairie Campus, that's gotta change what that site work looks like somehow. I think we should have the architects factor something for us on that, so we can even decide on that, whether we include it or not.
Well, let me put down, I'm putting that on... I'm putting that on the list with Barry's idea for other items to talk about.
We will.
Okay. Okay, so we are in agreement that none of those are...
ELR's off the table at this point, right?
They are, unless we choose to engage them.
Okay, so now we're through with the $200 million column. Is there anything beyond that, that anyone would like to see included?
Sensory rooms? Or additional classrooms, whatever you wanna call them?
Okay.
At the elementary level?
So, let, well, specifically sensory rooms, because there's a, so...
Okay, that's what they're...
Thumbs up, thumbs down on sensory rooms?
I'm thumbs up if we can rename it.
Yeah.
So, I think that we, I would really like to go back in and get a little bit more information on this, because do you remember when we sat here at the board table and we said, so we're gonna add an extra box to every single elementary school? Is that like the best use of resources? Or should we build like maybe a couple of classrooms onto a couple of schoo-, you know, and like, look at this? Well, I know that this is not, but you cannot tell me, because, and I think the architect at the time said, nope, it costs the exact same to put a box on every single elementary school as it would to do a little addition on a couple of schools.
So let's re-ask that question.
I feel like we just need to drill this down a little bit more, because I've never been satisfied with that answer. It just doesn't, it's not my field of expertise, but it just doesn't make sense to me.
Okay, so we've got a question for the architects about the sensory rooms. Eight versus four.
Community felt strong about it.
I think so too, I just feel like there needs to be a, a better understanding of like...
Truthfully, you know, I think through the discussions, you know, and I'm just, I'm just, I don't know this sitting here now, but I think it would be additional elementary space at each building to deal with the sensory issues as well as STEM, because I think that's an important component, and every building's a little different.
But that wasn't part of the sensory room square footage, so I just wanna be clear.
I understand that, but I, you know, if, if, if we rethink this after having all those conversations, I would suggest that we have some latitude there, basically an elementary addition to reorganize some space in the building to, for those purposes. Nah, I'm just speaking in general terms.
Can I phrase it like this? What I've got is sensory rooms, eight versus four pricing, and then, um, add 50% more space, give a surprise.
Yeah, I mean, like, right, there just needs to be like additional space at elementary rooms.
Each elementary school.
You know, I mean, and I don't know exactly how that...
So if they were adding 100 square feet, I'm making this up, for the sensory rooms, how much for 150?
Right, I mean...
50% more space, I'll, I'll let you tweak that.
I, I mean, I have to vet this out, but I guess I'd wanna rethink this a little bit at that level.
If the question is, what's the additional cost to do 150 square feet as opposed to 100 square feet at each elementary? It's going to be about 50% more, because the design cost is going to be negligible to design a little bit extra space, and you're really gonna boil down to a per-square-foot cost to do the addition on it. So.
That's why, that's why it was...
That's different than saying, oh, we're gonna put three times as large, we're gonna put 300 square feet on a third of the schools. That, you know, that might be a little different, that gets a little bit less expensive, because now you have a little bit less design cost associated with that.
I think though, I was using that 100 as...
Whatever the numbers are, I was, I was just rolling with that, but...
I, I would just remind the board though, when I, no disrespect to you, but STEM space was something that when we, that was on the original, original plan, and when we all prioritize things, it didn't make it on the sheet. So, are we thinking differently about that now?
I am, I'll just say that, I don't know about anybody else, but I would just, if you're asking us to rethink this space, it's elementary space.
So, so what I think about elementary, I think, and, and we've had this argument a hundred times, I think there's capacity at certain buildings throughout our footprint. And if you really wanna look at it hard, and where do we really need to add capacity? Do we need to add capacity to every building? Probably not. You could probably redistrict and maybe do a building here or a building there, if you choose. But I, I do believe we have capacity.
For?
At the elementary level.
For STEM?
For any, for just reallocation of space. And then that could incorporate STEM at each school, or it could incorporate a sensory room at each school, but it would require a major shift in, which isn't fun to do either.
So, can I ask, would your room utilization chart at the elementary level support that statement?
What was the question? You're talking that direction.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Would the room utilization at the elementary that as we know it, would that support Gavin's assumption?
I have a related question.
In other words, if we read, I'm looking at, you know, those of you that are close to this, we've had these discussions before. If we rebounded kids?
No, 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 no. What I was asking is, you've got classrooms, so many classrooms in a building, is, is... I'm sorry, you were saying that right, I apologize.
Yeah.
If you were to, is there a capacity if we were to shift some things around to gain space? Significant space?
My answer would be, it is spotty at a couple of the buildings where there may be some space, but I wouldn't want to base this type of decision on some grade levels having some sections where we haven't seen trends of it really going in one direction that would allow enough space to really warrant going full-blown into redistricting conversations. I think there's some spottiness at different sections of time.
I would agree with that.
That is absolutely the case. Why don't we maybe look at this issue as like just a set number? You know, like, we come up with a number?
Elementary space.
And then you call it elementary space, and then that's like a future discussion, you know, as far as...
How it's utilized.
Elementary classroom space.
I was so sold on those sensory rooms. I think they're important. And I wouldn't want that, I wouldn't want that space to go to something else, that's just me.
The space that's been freed up from the schools with this building? Which schools? Is it mostly from high school, middle, elementary, is there any indicate?
Certainly high school, and it's kinda situational after that, because we had them spread out, you know?
Right, that's why I'm, I'm wondering, not enough?
High school's a little bit.
Make any difference?
High school's a little bit, because we brought the IT team over, and, and we've got a... High school's probably the more, most notable.
So, would that impact any of the things at the high school at work?
No.
No?
We're, we're, we're over 90% utilization of that building now, which is, we're maxing out space there, so... Steve and his team do a great job, you know, scheduling that building every year.
Would it be helpful for our next meeting to ask the administration to do a little bit of an analysis on the elementary space that would help us make a decision?
I think that would be good. I think we need some elementary space, I guess I'd like to think through that a little bit, talk through it.
In conjunction with that, I'll ask us to relook at our trends for enrollment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because as much as we said there are declining.
Yep, it's pockets, right?
In aggregate, it's declining.
So...
Remember, we have filled some of that space over programming, you know, we have, and we can always back that off.
Those are things we...
The challenge is it doesn't always decline in a way that not have to decline.
I hear ya.
I know. I, I'm thinking about it all the time, right?
One whole class in one school.
The Exeter Gate kindergarten was the main, we used that program to fill space that we've had in the buildings, that we did not have five years ago.
So, we're asking for an elementary space analysis, just elementary?
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
Let us work on that. I want to get the, I'd like to talk with the principals in the, as a whole, and kind of get a better feel for that, after we've been through this.
The information about the enrollment.
I think we should probably factor in the CASADA report with that enrollment.
We have it.
Yeah, we have it, yeah.
We have it many years, several years out.
So, do you want that six and a half million in at the moment, or out at the moment?
Okay.
Thumbs.
Where are we?
Right now, we're sitting at 151.
Or it would have been, we know.
It would have been in.
Yeah. So, this is the sensory rooms.
Mm-hmm.
So, you have four.
Okay.
Mobles at Grove.
Four, yeah, four additional classrooms at Grove. This is to eliminate the Mobles at Grove. I think, you know what, this is a good one to discuss after we have that elementary analysis.
That's what I think, too, Penny. I totally agree with you on that.
So, we're gonna revisit... Grove classrooms. And hope I can read my writing next week. Okay. And...
So, you want that out at, at this point?
For now.
For, right now, that's not in.
All right.
New kindergarten classrooms did not make it on the last... Okay. Okay. Drum roll.
157.4.
Okay.
And the four additional classrooms at Grove, if they, if they went in, it would be 159.9, just, just sharing that for...
If the sensory rooms went in, then it would be like 165?
Oh, we have, we have the sensory rooms in, is, that was the vote that, that happened.
Oh, I didn't think, I thought we were putting that on hold, we, we have them in?
I think they were in.
That was a thumbs up.
Space holder, just to like talk about.
Elementary space.
Now, I, one thing we sort of skipped over was the 200 million column, the high school.
I know, did we put in the, the library renovation? Because that was in the referendum.
It was, so we, I, we got hung up on the middle school here and totally skipped this box, so let's go back and revisit this.
So, we should put that in.
So, the fitness...
The only one in that top group, uh, on the top part was the library, was the only one that was included in the referendum.
I thought... What about the lacrosse? No?
Nope.
No.
There wasn't, okay. Okay, so, let's just, because we've done it on the others. Knowing that the library was in before, do we want thumbs up, thumbs down?
It was.
It was in there, all the turf was in there, babe.
That's what...
Yeah, it was, it was, those two were in there.
Lacrosse and baseball turf were in.
Yeah, those were in there, Penny, you're right.
Okay. Library renovation at the high school, thumbs up, thumbs down.
Just ask, what did we just do to the library? I thought we did a renovation just now.
You know what, okay, so here's what they did there. The PTO funded new furniture.
And painted and carpeted.
That was kind of the renovation.
That was it? So, they closed it down for a couple weeks?
We didn't expand space, we didn't do any hard construction.
Oh, okay.
We didn't do anything.
They bought new rolling shelves, Steve used some of his budget, but there was no construction done there.
We painted, carpeted, and bought new furniture.
So, I'm sorry, library, I didn't see all the thumbs. Library is in, please.
And all of that stuff, we could continue to use, by the way.
And then, since I'm looking at now the fitness addition, the auditorium renovation, the locker run, area renovation, and future-ready classroom renovation, would anyone advocate to add those, add one of those? They were not part of the last referendum.
No.
What's our number?
160.2.
So, no one would advocate for those? Okay, just for the sake of it, the site work. Turf lacrosse field, I'll just say, we have to put a lacrosse field over there? Anyway, because that's on the other side of Hart Road.
Lacrosse isn't the right term.
I, I, I wasn't part of the board, but they were very passionate when they came and talked about turf, how much safer it is, how hard it is to keep the grass up, and that, you know, in the long run, they're gonna save money by putting turf in, because, you know, grass has to get replaced and cut, and so I just have to say, they were very passionate about it. I wasn't part of the board when you guys made that discussion, but I still want to be short-sighted when we look at that.
And I think that's what they got.
It was the turf field on the south end of the property.
So, let's, thumbs up, thumbs down on the lacrosse turf?
Now, remember, that's not just lacrosse, that was, it's a multipurpose field. We changed that.
This is not on the other side of Hart Road?
Yeah, it is. It's on the west side of Hart Road. But we had Hart Road, PE athletic field, so...
Okay.
Multipurpose, I just want to be...
Three down, two up, you in a vote?
We said no to the baseball turf, right?
We're not there yet.
I thought we already did that.
No, Angela said that she didn't want it, she was the one who said no.
Oh. So, I mean, I think we have, should have some consistency for turf or no turf, so if it's, I'll go turf.
Okay, we're split for right now, can we put it in?
We may have to take it off, see what Sandra...
Are we the same on the baseball?
Yeah, they, they, he said we should, I agree. I mean, if we're gonna do it, do both turf.
I know, well, I'm just asking everyone's opinion, in case someone changes. So, you guys are yeses? No's?
Right, right.
Is it okay if we leave it there, because it's, okay, so could you please?
Want that in as well?
Yeah.
Both, both turfs? Okay. No one's advocating for anything else in the 250 million dollar column?
No, we're not. So, you talked about a presentation from elementary space. I've heard a lot of talk of middle school and high school level with regard to the PE spaces in particular. Now, they're always used for something, and booking them takes a lot of coordination, whether it's after-school sports. I would, I would like to know if we made changes to that space. You know, maybe there are some things, savings, that we could realize by doing that, but I don't know what they are at this point.
At which level?
At the middle school or high school level. It's in the high school, we're talking about the high school right now, but...
You know, back when we did all of these rankings, there was, there were the, remember the level two, level three, level four changes? When you got higher in the numbers, some of those facilities were changing.
This is why I didn't want to go back here to a time, I mean, if I'm really, if I'm gonna decide on that, I'd like to have more data.
So, let's...
More data for what, I don't, I guess I'm confused.
Well, as I was just saying, Gavin, they, we spend a lot of time on administrative costs, the teacher time, coordinating how we're using our PE spaces, they're in big demand, all of them. Indoor and outdoor. So, if we're considering changing it, I like to how much we'd save by spending more, if you will. Does that make sense? We wouldn't be doing it unless it was an improvement, I'm assuming, on any of this.
I, I, I don't recall, but it was a significant number. At, at the middle, we didn't look at it, I mean, at the high school level, but at the middle school level, it was a significant number.
I mean, at the high school level, some of these changes are happening.
Yeah.
You know, at the middle, at the high school level, if we, if we, our list includes things that would change PE space.
So, we have a $7 million number here for fitness addition on the $200 column, 200 million for the high school. I don't remember, I'll confess, you know, what do we get for that?
Well... So, I don't know either, right at this time, we'd have to look on the computer, but that's not part of what even was included in the last referendum.
I know.
But it's the PE support expansion, the PE wellness addition.
That's what's...
There were definitely ex... There were, there was going to be more space added for contests as well.
No, 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 more, just for general PE classes. Mike Ogden's had, had, oh, oh.
Gym space.
Oh, oh, I, I thought you said contests, I thought it was like...
Well, when I say con, I mean, it's like gym space for volleyball teams and things like that, too.
All right, so assuming that's all good data that, that cost is based on, and that was in the 150 million column a year ago. Where did it end up? Was it in our, was it in our referendum?
Which item?
Yes, PE wellness addition is over here.
Yeah, where it was...
PE wellness addition?
The wellness addition was in, the support expansion was out.
Okay.
So, so the PE wellness addition, PE support expansion was out, you said that. But the wellness addition, if you go back and look at the...
It was in, I've got it, I'm here, but I mean, it's late, and I don't know where to find it. Then I'm for it.
And, and right now, that's the same we did that you've had so far, is that the, the wellness addition is in and the support expansion is out, so that's what you voted so far.
Okay, so, the only thing that we haven't, that we, that was part of the 185, that we, that appears in this middle school box, is the station and prairie...
Yep.
Kitchen and cafeteria renovations.
That's the only thing left.
Would, um, I just have to ask, station, kitchen, and cafeteria renovation. Does anyone have any interest in?
Well, tell us, are those necessities, are they really important?
I, I, I'm a supporter of renovating those spaces. Those are older cafeterias, as we want to continue upgrading our program and providing the right kind of nutrition for our children, I think that these would be good to do, especially as we will rely on those kitchens more with new program. I'm your business manager, that I'm voting for it, but I don't actually get to vote, so...
So, both, for both schools, to renovate the kitchen and cafeteria, it's 4.75, 6 million dollars. Can we do, can we just do thumbs? And we wouldn't probably do one over the other.
No.
So, what would that bring us to, if we did both those?
166.
166, 167.
But I gotta, I just want to say, this is not the final list, right?
Idea where we were.
So, cat, kitchen, ca...
Cut out 20 million.
Middle school cafeteria stuff.
All right.
One, two, three, four.
Administration says we need it, we need it.
Please, please add those to our list, right? And so that is the station kitchen renovation, the station cafeteria renovation, and the same at Prairie. It's called food, it's called a little bit, it's labeled differently. Prairie food service renovation, Prairie Commons cafeteria renovation. Where are we at? Well, we know where we're at.
167, 167 million, 50,121 dollars. So, it's 167.1 following a normal rounding convention, although it's slightly below that.
And then going back to your numbers here.
Because he's working with normal rounding conventions.
I mean, game minds.
167 would be...
Sneak up on you.
I'm gonna go back to my, okay, I know that that may have been painful, but I really appreciate us taking the time to do it.
Penny, you did a great job, it was like herding cats over here.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, process.
That was just an example. Right, it's a little clearer than that, yes.
Okay, so my goal was to leave her with a list of items, which we are doing. Okay, so, um, what I'd like to ask is that Brian and his staff make that list into something that is sort of reminiscent of the formatting on here. So, it includes the different levels.
Guys, are you listening?
Should I talk to you?
No, I'm just making sure they're hearing you. So, we're gonna create this list somewhere to the format that we've been using, shows the levels.
Broken out by level, okay.
Double check you in our numbers, Steph.
Okay.
We will do that.
So, before we leave this, though, we had two items that were thrown out as should we investigate? So, one is Barry mentioned the transition program. Do you want to elaborate a little more?
We've had some passionate discussions these last two or three meetings, and I just feel like they're asking us to, to commit some capital to really making it a worthwhile program, and, and again, you, you would know better than I, but maybe what we have planned at Grove isn't quite enough for Grove Avenue, for what, for what, you know, what, what may be needed. You're, you're meeting on Thursday, but I just don't know if it would be, you know, short-sighted not to include something in the referendum. And again, I don't have a number, because I, I don't even know what we would need, but, you know, if, if, if we need to allocate some dollars towards that program to try to meet some of the needs that maybe we're not meeting.
So, would this would just be physical space? Right?
Yeah.
Um, is there anyone else that would, I mean, we have a little, we have time now between now and our meeting on the 30th. Is there anyone else that would like us to ask the administration to investigate something other than what we've already committed to for the transition program? As part of this referendum?
Why don't we get feedback after you meet on Thursday?
Well, we're not meeting, though. Let me, here, let me share the timeline, then, this might help us.
I know what you're gonna say, because we got one more meeting, then we gotta make a decision. I mean, I don't know how to put in a dollar amount when, you know, like, that's, that's the only thing that I'm...
Well, that's, see, that would, what we would ask Brian and his staff to do is go back and talk to DLR and Pepper.
Could be a square footage, and, yeah.
Well, but we'd have to...
Have to have a site. Dedicated site.
That would be important, location, it sounds like, is important.
This would be a lot of work.
So, can I, so let me just ask this, though. I feel like we've heard a lot from the community about some of their thoughts on this topic, but I'm not sure that we've all heard from the administration about how the current property that we agreed to lease on will meet the needs of the program. Do, do we want to spend five minutes on this before we, you know, make a decision and go down another path?
I'd be happy to talk about it for a few minutes.
Whoever.
I mean, you know, we made a recommendation, and the board agreed to it, on a facility that we believe will meet the needs of the program as it currently exists, or we were never made the recommendation. You know, I heard some of the concerns. I think there's a concern about the long-term viability. Okay, we're in a five-year lease that the board approved, you know, about a month ago. We believe, you know, that that space is appropriate. Is it ideal? No, no space, any of our schools. We just go through, we just went through this, you know, there isn't a school in the district that's ideal right now, and for any kids at any programs, and, you know, but I do believe the plans we have in place there and the program that we're working hard to implement, it will meet those needs. I think it's hard for them to conceptualize that right now, I understand that. And we continue to have those conversations, we're gonna do that again on Thursday morning. I, I guess I would, I would want the opportunity to try to do it for a couple of years before I would say, recommend that we need to go out and seek additional space. That's, that's my opinion. Beth, any thoughts? I mean, did I miss anything, or?
Well, I think the focus needs to be on the programming and what we're doing with that space. So, it's not about, yes, we needed a bigger space, we needed a different space, we needed a space that had an ADA compliant bathroom that was enlarged, not just ADA compliant. We need a space for kids to be able to have a sensory room, and we have that within this transition program. We, we need a space where they can have a micro-business, and we can run our, run and do work at our micro-business. They need a space to be able to do their functional academics, and so we have a space for that. So, it, it's, it's, I think the way that it is, that the layout of it is going to be conducive to what we want to do. Our main goal is to make sure that our students are able to be out in the community as much as possible at work sites, you know, just navigating the community, working out, going to the, you know, Good Shepherd, doing things that we do in our lives. We don't stay in our office all day long, we are out in the community and doing things. So, it, it's important for them to learn how to navigate post-secondary education, to be able to get out there and have vocational skills and life skills. And that's our goal with this. So, do I think this space is conducive to what we want to do? I definitely do, and I, I... And that's our goal with this. So, do I think this space is conducive to what we wanna do? I, I definitely do, and I, I, you know, I, I care about these kids a great deal, and so I, I probably shouldn't take it as personally as I do, but it's, it's heartbreaking because I think all those, we listened to the, we met with the families on three different occasions. We met with, um, different, you know, parent groups and talked with them and got their input, and, you know, we did get the seal of approval a few times, and they've kinda gone back on things, so it's kinda heartbreaking to be at this point because we haven't even been given the opportunity to do what I think we can do in there. So, do I look long-term being there? I would, I would love for us to be long-term booming transition place. I think that is a good goal for us. But right now, I think this is going to meet our needs for our students.
It's our opinion. And we never would have recommended it.
Is there any early options for lease, or is it five years?
Oh, yeah, with proper notice, sure.
Not renewable annually, it's a five-year lease.
It's, no, it's not that. It's a five-year lease, but we always, we can, we can get out if we need to.
Five-year rolling lease.
Yeah, it's rolling.
So, now, based on what we just, I'm glad that you were able to share that with us.
And I also, one more thing I wanna throw in. When we met with the parents, we talked with them, we said we need, and, and they agreed with this. We need at least three to five years to be able to even, we gotta look long-term. If we're gonna build something, we can't do it this year, next year. We gotta, it's gotta be three to five years out, and that was our agreement when we talked with them, so.
About renting a spot?
Yes, we said we would rent a spot in the interim, and, and then we also make use of Tony Ow's place, the Campus Life Center for social engagements. So, we have other places that we go during the day as well. But we said this would be a good short-term. We're not looking at this for long-term, but we said we can't do anything before three to five years.
Gotta make sure we got the program right, which we're trying to make changes in that, too, the curriculum.
Yeah, I can't help but think of what jobs we could offer to them.
Absolutely.
Just as a district.
Today, we, I don't know. It'd be hard to design something for this discussion, is what I'm saying.
And I didn't mean to.
No. Oh, I've been thinking about this a lot.
I think it was a timely question, too.
And just to be clear, because one of the things they, I wasn't here yet, I was sitting in the audience, but they wanted to get out of the high school, didn't they? Wasn't, weren't they very clear?
Yes.
Because now they're saying, you're taking us away from the other students, so I don't understand that.
That's mixed, that depends on the parent, is all I'm gonna say. They have different opinions on that.
I sound like they wanted to get the heck out of the high school, and, you know.
Mary, just to explain that, there are transition.
Doesn't, transition, for the most part, we want to have kids in a separate, you know, location, but there are some students who go back and take some courses, and that can be part of a transition program, to go back and take a course or two. So, when Brian's saying that's kinda mixed, it is, we got a mixed bag there.
Yeah, we do. We have mixed. But based on the kid.
Right.
It's an IP, so it's an individualized plan, and every kid's a little different. It's not a one-size-fits-all scenario.
So, so, based on what we heard, are we okay leaving it as is, or do we want the administration to investigate further?
I'd love a report after Thursday in case they can change their minds, but no, I'm, I support the administration with what they're, what they wanna do.
We could say, you know, anything that we could do, like you said, like has already been communicated, would take three to five years anyway. This referendum plan, we're still, we're still figuring it out here, what's gonna be on it. That's gonna take three to five years, if not more, to finish if it passes and we do all that work, so. The solution right now is to lease, and it's already signed, so.
So, we're all on the same page. We're just gonna stick with what we have. Okay. The other thing that came up was, should we incorporate in the referendum doing something with the Little House on the Prairie?
That's our new property that we now own.
And do we want, do we want to have, we don't have to commit to that right now, but we'd like to ask Brian and his staff to investigate what that might look like.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, I can't stop calling it.
We don't have a number on that at this point, but it is a new asset, probably.
It leaves up a lot of space, too, on that campus.
Hmm? So, Penny, can you, real quick, this is my last question. How many meetings do we have till we have to decide?
Two.
Two.
You just went right into my next thing.
So, the real question, in my opinion, is how much money is each board member going to support? And then, on the flip side, I think we've heard a lot from the community. And I, and I was totally against this on the front end. Brian actually approached me on it, and I just said, no. But at this point, what we put forth was not successful. Does it make sense to re-engage the community and say, what do you guys want?
Well, we sorta had that conversation at the last meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, then.
No, that's all right. I'm just, I'll try to paraphrase.
Then I, we don't need to rehead up. Don't worry about it. We're eleven o'clock at night. We're good.
The desire was really to have this voted on and ready to go for back-to-school night, so we could communicate and give our community as long, and the community group as long time as possible to educate people.
Should we engage the community group? That's my only question, but I don't, we're not gonna talk about it.
Well, the community group gave us, well, I don't know which community group we're talking about.
We heard loud and clear what the community wanted from the folks that we.
You're talking about the referendum advisory group?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't know if you were talking about that group or the folks that gave us the feedback from the vote guys. So, are we still on, is everyone else still in agreement that we're moving forward to voting in August?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, so from here, you're gonna create the list, you're gonna get it back to us, we'll give you a week and a half or two weeks or whatever. Since we're not meeting until.
It's gonna take a couple of weeks, because we're gonna have to reaffirm some of these numbers with, with, especially Pepper.
Well, well, here's what I was gonna ask. Could you just get us the list?
Yeah, we'll do that.
And then, what I would like, you know, what I'd like you to do, if the board would agree, is that meet with Lance, or meet with the experts, DLR, Pepper, whomever, and make sure that the numbers are where they should be, and that we have everything, all the little site work pieces and everything to support the items that we have on our list right now. And then, would you ask them to also attend our next meeting?
Can do that, if they're, yeah, we'll try to see if they can.
I just think it would be helpful to have them in the audience in case we have questions for them.
Are we willing to pay DLR to do this work? Because they're not on our, we're not paying them right now. They're not on retainer. I mean, we'd have to, just an hourly fee. I mean, that's what it is, if we ask them to do it.
I would feel uncomfortable moving forward without having, having them double-check our list, because I wouldn't. They're the experts we've used, and I just wanna make sure that we're, we're doing this the right way. I would hate to take this to the voters and then say, you know, oops, sorry, we didn't allow for the stormwater. You know, so we can't make your project.
The number I gave you included that as a, as a placeholder. There were two items that we talked about relative to site work at BHS Site Utilities.
Don't, don't go there. I, I'm using this as an example. Thank you. Is there anyone who's, I mean, is there anyone who doesn't think it's a good idea to check with DLR and Pepper?
I think it's a great idea to check in with them, but I think our list of stuff is not realistic, and I think we might be spending money to have something that we're not gonna ultimately put on a ballot.
So, would you like to set a threshold right now for what we're willing, what we'd like them to review?
Let's just find out, which is my opinion. I.
Well, I'm asking everybody.
How much time do you think it is, Brian? Do you have any idea? Like, is it a couple hours?
I think it's a couple hours. I don't think we're talking about, unless we ask them to come. I mean, it's always, it's hourly.
We're not gonna ask them to reevaluate the whole thing.
Right.
Just what we're considering.
We're just checking the numbers.
Just our list, yeah. Just what's on our list.
We're not doing any more design concept or anything like that. The only thing we might do is on that prairie site, you know, we had, Greg Stoller did stuff years ago. You know, our, our, you know, architect that does our annual stuff, so that's where I'm gonna start with that. Just so you know, that won't be DLR, because they didn't do anything with that. Stoller has some plans from two thousand and six, you know, and we might just get a ballpark number on that to see what it would amount to. That's with, with Greg.
Okay.
Just so everybody's aware.
On that, on that point, Brian, the driveway on out of the new house is right on that curve, which is why you can only exit and not enter the DLC because of that curve. So, I'm not sure, you know, what the, what can be done about traffic.
I don't know.
I know we have more space on campus, but.
So, I would ask that we get that as soon as possible, so we can read it and review it to see if it's something that we would like to move forward.
Okay.
Okay. And then, we, if we're going to vote on this in two meetings, I would ask that you bring a draft of a resolution from, to, to put on the ballot for us to review at the next meeting.
Okay, we already had one from before.
Fill in the blank for the, for the amount.
Without the number in it.
Right. And then I just ask the board to review everything that we get sent, that were sent, you know, and read up. And then, here's where we go from here. At our next meeting, we're gonna have to come up with a number, look at our list, tweak that list to meet the number, and then we are going to review the resolution. At the following meeting, we're still on target to vote. We're still on all the same page for that?
Yep.
Okay. I asked you to think about two other future agenda items. We'll talk about those later.
Thank you.
Any other, any other comments about the referendum discussion we just had?
I think it's tricky to talk, like, last time we talked about break even and not break even. I think it's tricky because the taxes go down and then they go up in, in every scenario, except for, like, the lowest one.
You're considering break even.
What do you consider break even? How do you explain that clearly to, to the public?
It's not break even.
It's not?
Very simple.
It should be need-based.
It's not, no matter what you do. No matter what you do.
So, that's, I think the trickiest thing here is that. Well, if that's what the public was looking for, we don't have that, clearly, in a clear, explainable way.
So, think about that.
Right.
Okay, then, future agenda items. I can't believe I'm asking.
There's a referendum discussion, which we already know, and then we'll have a action for the twenty twenty-one calendar. Mary will have that put together. Remember, we're, we're, you're out on those, which is good, and board policies.
Okay.
That'll be it.
I think that's enough.
That'll be it.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the confidentiality of closed session minutes? Roll call. Do we need a roll call?
No.
Yes.
Newman, Leah Callister-Luzari.
Yes.
Mike Shackleton. Angela Wilcox.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Yes.
Second.
All in favor, guys?
Yeah, let's do it.
Thank you for your patience. We accomplished a lot.